Eileen, opening statement.
Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, June 9th, 2025. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 2nd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Kanter.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
Mr. Cabaracus's excuse for tonight, and Chairman Mertens.
I'm here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Could everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andy, could you swear in the professionals?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Charles Cunliffe.
Jennifer Beam.
Shari Shapiro.
Jordan Rizzo.
Professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next order of business, approval minutes, any minutes?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Okay, correspondence?
I have one thing for correspondence. Case number BA 24-21, Mid-Atlantic Offshore Development LLC will be carried to July 14th, 2025, with no further notice. An extension has been granted to the board through July 30th, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Okay, resolutions. Case number BA 25-07, Kyle De Metro, resolution approving bulk variance relief, eligible voters Kantor, Hughes, Orozco, Ryan Scottson, Cabaracus, and Mertens. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Next case is BA 25-08, Hassan Marrowlin, resolution approving bulk variance relief, eligible voters Kantor, Hughes, Orozco, Ryan Scottson, Cabaracus, and Mertens. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second by Jose. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Next one is case number BA 24-17/14, Ford Road LLC, resolution approving bulk variance relief, eligible voters is Kantor, Hughes, Orozco, Ryan, Scottson, Cabaracus, and Mertens. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Second by Ann Marie. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Next one, case number BA 25-01, NVR Incorporated, Ryan Holmes, resolution approving bulk variance relief, eligible voters Kantor, Hughes, Orozco, Ryan, Scottson, Cabaracus, and Mertens. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Ann Marie.
Second.
Second fight over. Roll call.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Case number BA 24-13, Edward Wiseman, resolution approving bulk variance relief, eligible voters Barillo, Kantor, Hughes, O'Donnell, Ryan, Scottson, and Mertens. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Who is?
Mr. Barillo, he didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
I can go home.
That's what you get for being chairman for the night. Anyway, before we vote on case BA 2502 resolution, Andy, do we need to put anything on record for that?
No, all issues have been cleared up, Mr. Chairman, between council and Department of Community Development. We're all good.
Okay, good. Okay, next case is BA 25-02, New Jersey Natural Gas, resolution approving use variance and preliminary final site plan. Do eligible voters Barillo, Kantor, Hughes, O'Donnell, Orozco, Ryan, and Mertens, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second by Jose. Roll call.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay, let's get to the real business tonight. Applications before the board. First one will be case number BA 22-10X, Route 70 Properties LLC, for an extension of time. Extension of time request on previous approved application for pylon sign on the property on October 3rd, 2022. Applicant is seeking a 12-month extension of time as requested to commence from the date that the board grants the extension on Block 135, 15.01, 2,200 U.S. Highway, Route 9 South. Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Jared Pape on behalf of the applicant, Route 70 Properties. As you indicated, we are here requesting an extension of approvals for a sign application from 2022. Happy to go into the reasons for the request, although I know we've been in discussions with Mr. Cunliffe in case he would like to make any statement, I'll happily pass it to him.
Yes, so for the board's reference, some of you may remember this, this is the Howell Center Shopping Center just south of Swing Time. They got approved, they were eliminating or consolidating the two freestanding signs in front of the site into one single freestanding sign. It needed a variance, I think, for the area of the sign because they were, it's a shopping center, so they're trying to advertise for all the tenants. You're not asking for any relief from the original approval rights, exact same what was approved?
That's correct, exactly the same.
So, and we issued a resolution compliance letter, so there's not an issue with them not having perfected the approval. I think this came up when they tried to file for building permits, they realized that the resolution had a one-year deadline. I have no issues with this, it's pretty straightforward.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. Any other remarks from the professionals, board members? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion on the extension of time for this application. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the extension of time for case BA 22-10X. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Ryan. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next case is BA 24-02, Zarelli Enterprise LLC, for use variance and preliminary and final site plan. The applicant, application of Zarelli Enterprise LLC is applicant and owner seeking a use in preliminary and final site plan relief to develop a 4,900-square-foot addition to the rear of the existing one-story building. The existing building will be repurposed for use as a warehouse and office space as part of the proposed trade contractor business on premise known as Block 48, Lot 7, 288, Squonkum Road. This application was scheduled to be heard on February 10th, 2025, when it was carried to April 7th, 2025, with no further notice, and we have an expiration of June 30th, 2025. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. We were here previously and began testimony with Mr. McDermott, our engineer, and at that time, it was expressed that the board and the board professionals were concerned with the buffer variance relief that we were seeking. We went back to the drawing board, submitted revised plans, made minor changes, but clearly not addressing the buffer variance relief that we're seeking. The applicant believes that there are legitimate reasons why the variance relief should be granted, so we wanted the opportunity to finish the presentation and ask the board to act on it.
So I think then if that's what you want to do, then you should bring the applicant up.
He's coming up next.
I'm just respectfully, you should bring him up because we were very clear as to what we wanted, whether your client thinks that was my opinion or the board's opinion, collectively, we were of the same opinion, and if he thinks he has a rationale to justify it, he should speak about it now. I don't really need to hear about the three trees that Ryan added to the plans, which did nothing to address the concerns that the board expressed.
I have no problem going out of term, we just want the opportunity to present a full case so that if a vote's taken, there's an opportunity if the applicant's able to appeal and he's able to, but we can't.
Well, I mean, how long do you think it will take just to, I mean, I think we should have a little bit of that on record because if we don't, then, you know.
We believe each, our direct presentation should not take more than 15 minutes with all the witnesses because the facts are very simple. It's just whether you believe we justified the variance relief or not, it's not a complicated matter.
Yeah, I think we will hear testimony.
Okay, you want to start with the applicant, we can. You prefer that?
I mean.
Let's do it.
That's, it's your.
Yeah, we'll bring him up, and then Ryan will be back.
Yeah.
Rod?
So, was he sworn in?
No.
No.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name for the record and spell your last.
Rod Zarelli, Z-A-R-E-L-L-I.
Okay, you can say it. So Rod, what is your relationship to the owner of this property?
I am the owner.
You already own it. You're a member of the entity that owns the property.
Yes, yes.
And you intend to use this property for one of your businesses, correct?
Yes.
You've heard the discussion previously about the buffer requirements, and you heard the board planners' comments about you coming up and explaining your position, and I know you've prepared a little statement, you want to say it?
Yes. Currently, the lot size is 199 feet wide. It's by, Ryan could tell me exactly, it's about 400 feet deep. 50-foot buffers would take more than 50% of the property. I'm sure you all know Doc Ratten, she's been around forever, I bought it all for her. For 30-some-odd years, she ran a bus garage, a gas station, and a bus storage yard in the rear. It was always cleared, it was always used as a storage yard. It's not contaminated, I had a Phase 2 done on it, the property's all clean. I own the property down the street, but I got variances from you a year or so ago. I don't have, I don't have a problem, no one, there's no complaints from me operating my business out of there, we've just actually grown quite a bit and I need more space. This will be a better place for me. I'm not very good at testifying, sorry, but bear with me. I'm friends with all the neighbors, either side of them have no problem with me doing the project, they actually hope I do do it because the place is a nice store and it's a mess. I've taken at least four 30-yard dumpsters of garbage out of the back when I bought it, and I took three 20-yard dumpsters of broken piles of concrete out of the back. There was old cars back there, there was old trailers back there. It's a mess. I believe once Ryan gets up and shows you what the building's going to look like when we're done, I'd like to put a 10-foot fence around, I don't know what the zone is for the fences, but I was going to ask for a 10-foot fence around the whole property, green giant Orbevites along all sides, just like I have down the street, nobody will see anything that's going on in the back. We're small, we're growing, but, I mean, my daughter's here and her husband, we're the people that own the company, we're a small family-owned business. We've been in town for 20 years, you know, my, I gotta look at my notes here, I'm getting a little, I just think that if, you know, for a 50-foot buffer, that, for a piece of property that was already cleared and used for storage in the past, it's a lot to ask, it's going to become a 99-by-400-foot piece of property, it's almost unusable. And I'll answer more questions in the future, but that's.
So we have of the applicant, he's prepared to answer questions that the board members or professionals have.
Yeah, yeah, could we put up the drawing for some of the members? And Jennifer, Charlie, if you want to.
I mean, I appreciate the fact that they cleaned up the property, that's great, and we could have forced that issue regardless of this application under property maintenance. We don't grant relief from buffers here easily, so I get that they're across the street and, you know, it is what it is, but if you've been in town for 22 years, you know that we don't grant relief for buffers, there's no justification for it. And just because you're happy with your neighbor today doesn't mean that's going to be your neighbor tomorrow. We have, that land use works indefinitely, so there's no justification. I know they have other professionals, but I feel like we were very clear in the direction that we gave them when they left in February, which is June. They chose to ignore us and to come back saying, I cleaned the property up, therefore I shouldn't have to provide a buffer, because we're going to throw a couple green giants and a fence up. That is not what our buffer requirements require. It requires a berm, a fence, heavily planted with a variety of things to protect the residents from a heavy commercial operation. So simply cleaning up the back of the property, taking out garbage, is not justification for putting the, you know, and respectfully, the properties up and down this road that don't comply with the buffer have been there forever, and every time the properties come here, we try to make the situation better than it's currently, than it is currently. So that's not justification for relief of that either, so I kind of feel like if you can't make it work, first of all, it's a conditional use, and that one of the conditions is compliance with the buffer, and that was something that we did recently, that was part of our recent master plan that was vetted out over multiple months with multiple people looking at it, and so, you know, it's not just like we're going to allow this and it's under traditional Section 63, they have to comply. That's part of the conditions of this use going on this site, and if they can't comply with that, that's problematic. So maybe it's not the right site, that's my opinion. So I'm sure they have, you know, they have other witnesses that are available to come up, but, you know, one of the conditions of this use being allowed at this location is compliance with the buffer, which is basically what we told them when they came here the last time. So I don't, you know, I mean, I guess we can listen to the rest of the testimony, but I don't, you know, we'll see what they say, but, you know, we were pretty clear the last time what we wanted to see happen here, and that did not happen.
Right, can I speak again?
Yes.
Again, I'm not subdividing a lot where I want to make, I have a 400-foot.
That's not what the requirements are.
Excuse me, can I speak for a minute? I'm not subdividing a lot that's 400 feet wide and trying to get two properties out of it. This was subdivided 50 years ago, it's 199 feet wide. It's unusable at 99 by 400.
100 feet by 400 feet is 4,000 square feet.
But there's, with the buffers, how are you supposed to drive a truck into a building or anything like that?
You should remove the building like we told you the last time and reconfigure the site. That's what we told you the last time, if you want to use this property. It can work, it's just not working the way you're proposing it.
And you've granted buffer relief across the street from me.
Reluctantly, and not 100%. And respectfully, this has been since February, we told you what we wanted, not one single time did I get a phone call from anybody on your team asking for a meeting to figure out what else could be done. You just submitted plans that show the exact same thing you did when you were here before, basically disregarding what the board told you. Now, I know you think I told you, but I'm fairly confident that they're going to tell you that I've been here 20 years, I do know what they're asking for.
Yeah, and I will go on record, from that meeting, I was very clear, the same that I concurred with our planner on this. So my thinking is, we really want it to work for you, but again, justification, I just don't see it here.
Rich, I would suggest we hear all the testimony before you make any conclusions.
And just a brief response to what Jen said, we understand the conditional use standard, that's why we refer this board and not the zoning board, I mean, the planning board, so we know we haven't met that condition and therefore the jurisdiction lies with this board. And if you just give us an opportunity to present the rest of our case, it will be as brief as possible, but we need to be thorough so that it's a complete record.
Okay.
But we won't, none of the witnesses will take long.
Okay.
Rod, did you have anything else?
Not yet, not pronounced.
Any board members, any questions? Okay.
And we're going to bring Ryan back up. He did start his testimony last meeting, so he's just going to finish it and supplement it briefly with what he did to change the plans. Ryan, you were sworn in, but just for, you wanted to re-swear him or?
As long as he's been sworn.
State your name again for the record.
Ryan McDermott, M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T, site engineer on behalf of the applicant.
All right, Ryan, would you run through for the board, what, why don't we start with what changed since the last meeting, and did you need a different exhibit up?
If we have the opportunity, there was a updated site plan rendering that was sent over earlier today. If not, I saw the site.
A23?
It'll be a newer version of A23.
Okay.
If A23 is all we have, then I can work with that.
Is it something that was?
I sent an updated version of this to Eileen, yeah. Yes, thank you.
So this is what number?
So this will be a new exhibit?
This is 826.
826 for the record.
Yep, I marked it.
Okay, Ryan, go ahead.
So this is a site plan rendering with today's date prepared by my firm. I'll quickly touch upon the updates and then go through the rest of my direct, I know we've got our planner coming in behind you, so, looks like there's a little white box over there, but that's okay, I'll continue through here. We modified the plans to eliminate two of the overhead doors, the only two overhead doors, which were on the south side of the building, and the applicant is now proposing to convert the existing gravel, which was previously located on the south side of the building, to open space area with some additional plantings. The intent is provide a buffer wherein proximity to the existing residential dwelling, which is located south of the site. You can kind of see it on the south, southwest corner in that area, there's the existing dwelling, that's correct.
What sheet of the site plan set is this from?
This would be Sheet 4, combined with our landscape plan.
So it's not in the plans you submitted?
This is the site plan with the landscape plan superimposed.
Right, so I'm looking at the landscape plan, Sheet 6, and none of that vegetation is shown.
The landscape plan I have in front of me does show that vegetation?
Not mine.
No?
Mm-mm. Do you have that?
No, it just shows existing, like bubble.
What's your last revision date?
5/29/25. Where's the, where's the plantings?
Oh, I don't see that.
Yeah. All you're showing is a tree line, you're not showing the plantings on the landscape.
Is your, is your tree line to the north and the south existing, or are you saying those are all new?
No, those are existing tree lines.
Well.
Should that look like plants?
You just said that you're putting in green giants.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to the landscaping part of the testimony.
Well, I'm just trying to reconcile what you're showing the board as what you submitted, and we don't have that.
Would it be more helpful to just reference the landscaping plan, which maybe makes it more clear as to what is new and what's existing?
Sure, if we have that available. That was Sheet 6 of the civil drawings?
Or maybe refer back and forth, but I think that one better shows the new planting, so it's clear. And Ryan, while they're pulling that up, you said that the two southern doors are being eliminated?
That's correct.
Okay, so new architecturals would need to be submitted to show that, right, that hasn't been provided yet?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Here we go, so this is the landscape plan within the civil set, color's not provided here, but what does perhaps look a little more discernible is the fact that the bulk of the proposed landscaping is on the westerly portion of the site, whereas the northerly, southerly, and easterly property lines have existing vegetation, which was represented on the site plan rendering we were looking at earlier. We do have a note on here, we did provide an itemized response letter indicating that the applicant would be willing to work with the board's licensed tree expert to supplement the existing vegetation along the northerly, easterly, and southerly property lines. But again, the intent was to convert the existing gravel on the south side of the building to additional pervious area, open space, which, that area we identified was in proximity to the existing residential dwelling on the south side of the site, and then as you move away, head towards east property line, east portion of this site, the outdoor storage component expands again. With respect to the bulk requirements here, as I noted during our first meeting, the property is undersized and equates to only about 70% of the minimum lot area required within the SED-1 zone. The SED-1 zone requires a minimum front yard setback of 60 feet, whereas the existing building has a setback of 23.9 feet. In order to improve upon the curb appeal of the building, the applicant is proposing brand-new facades, which includes a small awning along the front facade, it will slightly exacerbate the condition for the front yard variance, with a proposed front yard setback of 21.7 feet to the awning. I will note that Squonkum Road has an 80-foot-wide right-of-way along the property frontage. This means the property line is deceivingly far from the road, about 29 feet between the edge of pavement and the property line. So the building will be more than 50 feet from the roadway, and with the exception of the awnings, the improvements and operations of this business will take place out of the front yard, confined to the sides and the rear. The applicant is removing all of the asphalt and parking area from the front yard and replacing this with landscaping and open space. In doing so, we are reducing the amount of impervious coverage on site by over 10,000 square feet. The zone allows up to 70% impervious coverage, and while we're at 72.6% under proposed conditions, this is down from 85.7% under existing conditions. Touch quickly upon access and circulation. We're closing off the two existing driveways and channelizing into a single 24-foot-wide full-movement driveway on the north end of the site. We chose this location for a few specific reasons. One, we wanted to get operations out of the front yard, and the north side of the building One, we wanted to get operations out of the front yard, and the north side of the building offers more space to facilitate circulation to the rear behind the building. Additionally, there's a utility pole along the roadway, which we are intentionally avoiding with our driveway, so we don't have to relocate it. The applicant has already met with the Monmouth County Planning Board to discuss the proposed driveway location and the need to preserve the existing utility pole. While final approval is pending at this time, they do support the driveway location and indicated they would support a waiver from pavement widening along the frontage. We're proposing new curving along our frontage, as well as curving for our driveway into the site, where the curb will ultimately transition down at the property line to meet existing graves. The side and rear yard areas, with the exception of the area we just discussed on the south side of the building, will remain as existing gravel. I'll also note, we are proposing a sidewalk along the frontage. With respect to traffic, the applicant will be the owner-operator, as you heard, knows the ins and outs and daily operations of the site fairly well. However, even from an ITE standpoint, this is a very low-intensity traffic generator. Use is anticipated to generate nine entering trips and three exiting trips during the weekday morning peak hour, and four entering trips and 10 exiting trips during the weekday evening peak hour. With landscaping, we're proposing 48 total trees on site, 72 shrubs, and 28 ground-covered plantings. Lighting, we're proposing one pole-mounted light at the rear of the site, adjacent to the parking spaces, and one building-mounted light along the rear facade. There were some comments in the engineering review letter about supplementing the front yard and parking areas to increase illumination levels, and the applicant would be happy to coordinate with the board engineer on that. And lastly, I'll touch upon signage. We are proposing one facade sign along the front side of the building, which will comply with the underlying zoning requirements.
Thank you, Ryan. That's all we have with the engineer, Mr. Chair.
Hey, Charlie?
Charlie is conflicted.
I'm sorry, Jordan.
Jordan Rizzo was seeing me again.
Sorry, Jordan.
First question I have, I guess, back to the buffers a little bit, is now that you're eliminating the southern doors, you have the opportunity to almost buffer the entire southern property line by taking the building and extending it? Did you consider that at all? And then similarly, even on the north side, once you get past the building, you could really do the same thing, and your 100 feet inside the buffer on both sides could be your storage area.
I didn't really follow the first part. Could you repeat about extending it?
Okay, so, yeah, so the first part is, on the southern side, you eliminated the doors, you don't need to drive a truck to the back anymore. Can you just take the building extended all the way to the east and essentially give yourself that 50-foot buffer from the south?
Extend the building further to the east?
Just draw the line, not really.
So, you have a 50-foot buffer to the north and to the south?
Right.
Basically, he's saying, take the corner, that corner of the building, and extend it all the way to the eastern property line, and that would be buffer to the south.
Yeah, so, I think going back to what the applicant was stating, that would further reduce the amount of outdoor storage he's proposing, which would-
Well, I get that, but, you know, we have requirements here. Here's a question for you. Have you walked the site with Sherri?
I have not walked the site with Sherri.
So, you do realize that that's typically what happens when applicants come in, especially when they're asking for relief of a buffer, to see whether or not the existing vegetation is worthwhile? And, you know, it may look great to you and me, but she has taken down trees that I thought were beautiful because they were not great. So, you're relying upon existing vegetation, you have not added anything to the buffer, and you didn't talk to our tree expert on what's there currently, right?
So, I've walked sites with Sherri in the past. I understand the process, and as noted on the plans and as indicated on our response letter, as I mentioned earlier, the applicant should, the board decide to act favorably on the application, would absolutely agree to supplement those buffers through coordination with Sherri.
So, go ahead, Sherri.
So, the supplemental buffer area is just that 15 feet?
Along the north side and then 10 feet on the south side, yes.
Right, I mean, and if you have 10 feet of woods, you're not really going to be able to put much in, you know, in that 10 feet.
I think the applicant's position is if it's 10 feet of dense vegetation and woods, would there be a need for additional buffering?
And if you're saving 10 feet of woods, you might only save a few trees, you know? Trees aren't on top of each other, so if you just take a slice of 10 feet of woods, that's not going to be a dense buffer. It would definitely have to be, you know, enhanced, but it doesn't say how much, you know? So, if you do trees 10 foot on center all the way down, that's a lot of trees, you know? It's a big cost. So, without having that on the plan, you know, then I'm going to have to ask for that in the field. Like, that needs to be on the plan.
Yeah, understood.
Ryan, putting the buffers aside for just a minute, is the largest truck you're anticipating an SU-30?
With the roll-off dumpster trucks, yes.
And then is, are the trucks going to be staging outside of the building, or are they pulling all the way in?
No, there will be opportunity for trucks to pull inside the building.
But are they also going to be outside of the building?
Perhaps at times during maneuvering operations.
Yeah, point being, I mean, I know you have a schematic of a, like, a dashed line where the trucks could be on the outside.
Right.
The way it's shown, they'd be blocking the driveway, so I'm just curious how that maneuver is going to work, if they're going to be waiting in the driveway to get in, or if they're pulling all the way into the building and then can actually get by?
They would be pulling all the way in the building. Those are only shown for graphical purposes, to show that we can fit the 60-foot-long moving space.
Okay, so it'll be a free movement in and out of the driveway? One of your previous planned revisions too, you said that you're redressing the gravel on the back, and then that was eliminated, you're just maintaining the existing gravel. Have you looked at that and analyzed it to see if it's satisfactory for what you're intending to do here?
I believe the applicant has looked at it and believes it to be satisfactory for his needs.
Okay. What about Monmouth County? Where are you at with the county as far as all the improvements along the front?
We've submitted to them. We've met with them actually on multiple occasions, specifically on the location of this driveway. We are seeking waiver relief from the pavement widening requirement, which they are in support of, but we have not sought out the final approval on that yet, as we were waiting to appear before this board.
Think I'm all right for now.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, you need a waiver for lighting, you need a waiver for the width of the driveway, you need a waiver for access to the public sidewalk. We discussed the fact that the architectural standards is not compliant, you need a waiver for that. And you need a variance for coverage. So, here we are with a 15-foot buffer on the one side and a 10-foot buffer on the other, with no willingness to work with us on it whatsoever, and you're asking for an impervious coverage variance of 79.7%, where 70 is permitted. So, I'm not really understanding the thought process here. If you increase the buffer, you'll decrease the coverage, right?
Yes, and we have further decreased the coverage. I think we're at around 72.6% right now.
You're still over.
We are still over what's-
So, I mean, there's a lot of relief here, aside from the use, that maybe this, if this operation needs this amount of space, this may not be the appropriate location for it.
Or, I, you do have another property. I believe it's 255, correct? So, if, is there, and I understand you're talking about using this as stor, also having storage on it. Can you do something on the other property to increase storage on that and minimize the storage on this to utilize, so you can move the building back and make it more usable for what its purpose is with regards to the trucks coming in and out?
That would be the applicant's, he would have to respond. Ryan's not capable of responding.
I'm putting it out there for that reason.
And he did say that his business has grown, that's why he needs a second location. He was up here before.
Understood, but again, going to Jen's point, there's been things presented that it doesn't appear that there's much give and take, so I'm trying to figure out how maybe we can make it work so everybody is happy.
Andy, did you?
Yeah, I had one question for Ryan. Ryan, you had said you didn't meet with the board's licensed tree expert out on the site, but you had done so on other applications or for other clients. Was that your decision personally not to meet with the licensed tree expert, or were you not authorized by your client to do that?
I believe in prior applications, it was offered and stipulated in a review letter as a suggestion. I don't think that came up in this particular case, but we did indicate in various response letters and on the plans that we would be happy to do so.
But he wasn't prohibited from the-
I was not, correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Glenn, you had a question?
Ms. Beam, they're obviously going to have to come back to us, but is there a compromise that you would deem appropriate to the 50-foot on both sides?
I mean, that's what we recommended, but yet we received no offer to meet and discuss, and the plans came in with the buffers exactly the same as they were in February, so-
Seems to me that that's his next step, is that to be done.
I mean, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the building's narrow, and something needs to be done, but there's got to be some kind of compromise, right?
Yeah.
Well, the building itself that's there today, I mean, it's small in comparison to the addition, but the building itself is going to essentially block a driveway that would provide a compliant route into the site. So, I mean, the site's long, and you can squeeze a building all the way in the back if you really wanted to, but that prohibits them from doing the doors on the side and bringing the trucks in. So, the site is usable in the sense that they want a brand-new building in the back, but to maintain the existing building and do it where they have the side entry, it's hard to do that with the 50-foot buffers on both sides.
And I do think that this came up at the last hearing, that, you know, we're so married to keeping this existing building, that it's creating problems on the rest of the site, and that perhaps they should look at maybe taking down this dilapidated building, constructing something new in a location that would allow for a more compliant application. That's what we told them in February.
And maybe turn it so that the build, so that the, so that the, the trucks can parallel, it'll be parallel so they can come in.
Not to mention too, that the front yard setback is a variance with the existing building, that's Beam's aspiration.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have something to say.
Yeah, Mr. Luzzano?
You know, I've been sitting up here for 20 years plus, on and off, and we don't generally give these kind of variances. There's multiple things you're looking for, and I don't understand why you wouldn't knock that building down either, because I've been looking at that building for over 40 years. And you've got to work harder to get along with Mrs. Beam to give us what we want. We don't pick what we want, and you don't custom-build what you want. You have to do it with our planner, because we're going to vote the way our planner tells us to vote, because we haven't all been on the board for 20 years and know everything there is to know. And you've got to work harder to get along with Mrs. Beam and the tree expert, and like, you asked for a 10-foot fence. A 10-foot fence doesn't exist. It might be 10 feet if it's on top of a berm, but for me, I don't see it happening.
So-
Yeah.
When we left last meeting, my client and we were, and this is no offense to the professionals, because we didn't talk to them in any detail, but the impression was, you have to give us the 50 feet on both sides and don't come back without it. But if there's, my client's willing to be flexible and come back with a revised plan with a bigger buffer, we just can't give you the 50 feet. We could meet with Sherri and give you a detailed landscaping plan, but if it's 50 feet or nothing, then we want to vote on this tonight. If it's not, if there's room for compromise, we're willing to certainly come back to compromise. We're not, we can't negotiate it here, we understand that.
Yeah.
But if there's flexibility, we're very flexible.
But Sal, how do you, I mean, the board doesn't dictate what you or your client want to present to the board, right? I mean, they're not going to say, okay, we'll take 48.5 feet. You've got to make a, it's a decision your client and your-
Understood.
Has to make and make a presentation, and then it has to be considered. The board can't design it for you.
We're not asking that. We're saying that if it sounded like, in the comments tonight, there was flexibility to consider something less than what you ordered, so obviously, I don't know if that means 5 feet, 10 feet, or 20 feet. It's up to us to come back with something that we think gets you where you should be, and we're willing to do that.
When you say "we," you mean you people and Mrs. Beam?
The applicant.
And Mrs. Beam.
It's not our decision. Yes, so we would have to, if this, if what I've just suggested is going to happen, we would come up with a concept, send it to your professionals, have a technical meeting with them, try and get them to sign off on what we're proposing, and then come back. And if we can't, then we'll have to come back and finish.
There's going to have to be a happy harmony here.
I agree.
I mean, there's so many things, you know, when we give a variance like this, it goes for good with the property, so it may be fine for your owner now, but if we don't have it right the first time, and we get sued, that doesn't sell.
Whatever you do, the town has to live with forever. We understand that.
That's right. So, you've got to be more cooperative to work with Mrs. Beam, so we could feel good about voting in approval, because we generally don't.
Right, and we think there's plenty of reasons to support some relief. We understand that the relief that we're talking about tonight is probably far in excess of what the board would reasonably consider, but so we're willing to come back. If you give us some time, we'll do it.
Sal, I thought you wanted a vote tonight.
Well, we wanted a vote tonight, but based upon the comments, it sounded like there's some open-mindedness to consider some relief. That doesn't mean that there's going to be five yes votes, it just means that we think if we have one more shot at it, we can get closer to something that everybody would find reasonable.
Well, I think you ought to go back to the drawing board and draw up something that we could all feel good about, and stay in constant communication with Mrs. Beam and whoever else you need to, and come back at a later date.
And I speak to Mrs. Beam regularly, so it's not as if she's hard to find. I talk all the time.
It's just, you know, boiled down simple. If she isn't happy with it, we're not going to be happy with it. That's just the way it is. We don't invite lawsuits.
Nobody does, especially me. So, if we can, we're going to need a little time. We're going to come back with some concepts to show your professionals, and hopefully we'll come up with a plan that everybody's happy with, or at least less unhappy.
Nick, did you have something that you?
I was just wondering, like, so what happened over the last two months? You were here on April 7. Ms. Beam, you know, and the board agreed that the 50-foot buffer, you know, was a conditional, was a conditional use of this property. So, what happened from April 7 to today, where we're still basically in the same exact spot?
Well, what happened was, if, number one, is if the board, if the, if the position of the board is that it's 50 feet or nothing, then let's finish tonight and let's get the vote. If the position of the board, which I sensed might be that there might be some flexibility if we demonstrate we're working with everyone, then that's-
So, that's what I'm saying. Why haven't you worked with Ms. Beam from April 7 to today on that?
Because the impression of the applicant was that it's 50 feet or nothing, don't come back with anything less than that. And that's why he felt, let me, we compromised by giving you that little, that area to the south, but that's all we did. So, again, if the board, we could finish tonight, we're prepared to do that. We just thought that if there's an opportunity to compromise, we're more than willing to do it.
The only, the only thing that concerns me, Sal, is, I don't think you could ask the board whether they're willing to grant a waiver in advance, like you're-
I haven't.
I, well, you're saying, but like, if they're telling you, well, go ahead, present your application, it's, you're doing it sort of, but I guess, you can have a feel of where everyone is and make a decision.
We'll finish tonight, let's go. Let's just finish. If we could vote, and if it's denial, we could come back with amended application. If that's what you want to do, we thought that there was a possibility to resolve it without going through that. If you want to go through it, we'll go through it.
I'm not-
I would just say respectfully, Sal, my notes say, come back with a buffer closer to 50 feet. That's what my notes say, that's what Sherri's notes say. So, I don't think anyone here said 50 feet or bust, but I feel like the frustration from the board is there was no communication with the professionals between the last time you were here and now, and we're, I agree with Mr. Bro, we're at the same place we were with a couple shrubs added. So, I'm more than happy to work with the applicant to see if we can come to a meeting of the minds, but they have to be willing to work with us as well. That's all I'm going to say about it.
I'm with Ms. Beam on that for whatever's, whatever it's worth. Yeah, I'm 100% in agreement, trying to get this worked out, because, I mean, Mr. Zarelli, I mean, we really like to work with you, but you've got to work with us. And what happened from the last meeting was working with us, and that's where we're frustrated.
The last meeting, in all due respect, the last meeting, Ms. Beam said, we do not negotiate buffers.
Which we don't typically do, correct?
But, no, she flat-out said, we do not negotiate buffers, and that was the end.
Sal.
So, I had a 99-foot-
Sal.
We will negotiate. If you guys are willing, we'll do it.
They don't have to agree to negotiate it.
No.
So, we have to come up with a plan, and hopefully, we can convince the board professionals that it's adequate, and that's, if you give us a chance to do that, we'll do our best to do it.
I think this is, our consensus is, we'd like to give you guys a chance to come back, so-
Thank you.
Just to show that we, you know, we want to help, you know, try to work this out.
I wouldn't have wasted your time with this, but, okay, sorry. I'll move on.
Do we get to extend the time, Mr. Chirico?
We'll give you an extension of time, and we need a date a couple months out.
Right now, I have August 11th with no applications, August 25th with one application, and September 15th with one application.
I'm looking just at our engineer, because he's the guy doing the heavy lifting, so it's up to him. Can you do August 11? August 11?
August 11, and what would the extension?
You gotta get the plans in and tech meaning and all that before that, right?
Oh, we'll get, yeah, oh, plenty of time.
Okay. I mean, it's like two, it is like two months.
And we, and the board needs an extension, I believe. We'll grant the extension through the end of August, if that's, okay. Do you need a letter?
Uh, yeah, tomorrow's fine, thank you, Sal.
Okay.
This week, instead of tomorrow, just in case.
Okay, this week.
So everybody's good with this, then?
So we asked that the, Mr. Baer announced.
Okay. Okay, application BA 24-02 will be carried to August 11th with, uh, extension of time to April, no, August 31st. So, with that in mind, we'll see you back then.
Thank you.
Okay.
Say bye. Thank you.
Yeah, I lean, we're gonna take a five-minute break, please.
The board will now take a five-minute break and reconvene at 7:55 PM.
Yeah. Why not?
The meeting will now reconvene.
Okay. Well, welcome back, Sal. I haven't seen you in a while.
I, I missed you.
Anyway, I'll read the next case into record. Case number BA 22-01, Haji Holdings LLC, use variance preliminary and final site plant and preliminary and final major subdivision and bulk variance. Description is, the application at Haji Holding LLC is applicant and Haji Holding LLC, lot Chopin and Sean Muller, lot 34.01, is owners seeking approval to construct a 32-by-45-foot pavilion over an existing outdoor paver patio seating area, replacing of an existing 30-by-60-foot tent with a new pavilion of the same footprint and the expansion of a stone walkway and paver patio near the existing onsite pond. They are also proposing a lot line adjustment for the shared property line between existing lots 34.01 and 36.02 in block 178, known as 420 and 438 Adelphia Road. This application was scheduled to be heard on February 24th, 4th, 2025, when it was scheduled to April 7th, 2025, with no further notice. On April 7th, 2025, the application was carried to June 9th, 2025. Expiration is June 30th, 2025. Welcome back.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board Secretary, Al Firi, on behalf of the applicant. In this application, we actually worked with the board professionals, and as you could see from the revised reports, many of the comments have been eliminated as a result of revised plans. We have three witnesses. We have the owner, the engineer, and then the planner, because there is de-variance relief. They should be relatively brief, because there's very little site improvements proposed, but we'd like to call the owner, Robbie, first. You're gonna have to get sworn in.
Okay, do you wanna get everybody sworn in at the same time, or do you wanna do it as individually?
Fine, we could. You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You state your name, start at the.
Robbie Muller. M-O-W.
M-O-W.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Siv, S-I-V-E, professional engineer.
Allison Coffin, COFFI, professional planner.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Robbie, you're the owner of the Our House Restaurant, is that correct?
Yes.
How long have you owned it?
20 years.
How, and what was it, how long has it been used as a restaurant?
Almost 300, 300 years.
Okay. So, you're here tonight because there's certain improvements that were, were made to the property, I think during COVID principally, right? So tell the board what you did during COVID and what you're proposing tonight, and how it will function for your business.
Sure. During the COVID, outdoor was important. All the customer, most of the customer wanted to sit out there. Back then, we had, we had a good, good weather, too. So I did a little bit, like, in the back seating area, and leave a little, because we cannot go inside anymore. So I did patio, a nice patio. I did it myself with a couple of the kitchen crew, because I kept all my crew in the kitchen, you know, cooks and a dishwasher, and a practice, everybody. We'll go in there, we made a nice patio. But back then, I didn't know, come to township or apply for anything. So I kept that business going, just bring a little, small little band, and, you know, keep that going. And thereon, I put a little tent over there, because tent was allowed. So I bought a tent, 30-by-60 tent, so people, whoever want to, I booked a party, like, a long time, like waiting for a meeting, or 216. So I kept them going there instead of canceling it. So that's the way I kept my business going, because I didn't wanna lock it up, close it up, or anything like that, and that went. But, so I wind up, like, saying, okay, let me permanent, like, have allowed to do this even today. That's why I want the tent to be a little pavilion, so people still can go in there and having their ceremony or whatever, or they can still outside, if the weather permitting, they can sit at the patio and probably dinner, or, or just listen to music, having a drink. But still, like, today, if we can, weather is good, then almost everybody come outside. We have a band outside to listen to it, not like on a boat place, not like inside and outside. And we have, like, 307 seats, you know.
307 total seats.
Total, 307. And until now, we don't have no problem, no complaint or anything like that.
So if the board were to grant this approval, you would get any and all permits that were, are required for whatever you did, plus whatever you're proposing to do, is that correct?
Yes.
And just for the record, hours of operation, my notes show that you're open from 4:00 PM to 12:00 PM Tuesday through Sunday, and 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on, uh, Tuesday through Saturday, I should say.
Yes.
And 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday, correct?
On Sunday night, yeah.
And then the number of employees on site at your peak times?
Yeah, eight, eight, 10.
Eight to 10 employees?
Eight to 10, yes.
Okay. That's all we have of Mr. Muller.
Yeah.
Yep. Charlie.
John's gonna.
John, oh, yeah. So, Sal, Mr. Haji, would you be able to explain to me what it is that you're currently approved for, as far as the business there? What kind of events do you have there?
What kind of events?
Yes, what kind of events?
Oh, we do wedding, and then, very once in a while, I mean, last week, we had a vendor night, vending, you know, they come to sell and all of those.
What was that? I didn't, what was that?
Vending.
Yeah, vendor night, as I said.
Okay.
And then we have 216, um, that's what those.
Cause I'm currently aware of Zumba Night at Our House Tavern, which you're not approved for?
John, I never know that, because in the morning, the, you know, they do like six or seven ladies, you know, I know the girl, but.
That's not an approved event, sir.
No, sir, I didn't know, otherwise, you know.
Well, it's your restaurant, is it not?
Yes.
How do you not know?
No, because having a hall room like that, and, you know, I mean, like, if I have a wedding there, okay.
These classes are advertised all over Facebook, so.
Yes.
I have a question. What is a Zumba Night?
It's like a.
Exercise.
What?
I still can't understand.
Exercise.
It's an exercise.
Exercise.
It's like a dance class.
It's like yoga or stuff like that.
It's like a dancing exercise.
So Sal, right.
So what does that fall under, gymnasium?
No.
No, I mean, why isn't he allowed to do it?
Cause it's not permitted.
That's, yeah, I know, but is that spelled out? This is the first time I heard of this.
I know, I was kinda questioning that, too.
It's not a permitted use, he didn't apply for a zoning permit to do it.
Yeah.
They have an approval from 2013 for a restaurant and a real estate office, period, end of discussion.
Okay.
Advertising exercise classes, had they come and asked for permission, I don't know that we would.
This is the first I heard of that, so that's news to me.
Yeah.
But in the paperwork here, it says he's applying for a subdivision. What subdivision?
Not anymore, it's taken out.
I know, but it wasn't taken out of here.
Correct, so the property that's immediately to the west is also owned by the applicant. They were originally proposing to do a lot line adjustment and then.
Right.
Move the temporary tent, that's now gonna be a permanent structure, kinda.
Okay, I understand all of that, but.
But it was technically a major subdivision, which required.
But it should have been taken out of the, the paperwork that we received.
Correct, so.
Because if we didn't ask, we wouldn't know.
Yeah, so I think my letter is updated, that says it's use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan. That probably, that may be a carryover, because the application has been, I think, carried at least once, so that, that might just be a carryover from how the application was originally filed.
All right, proceed without the Zumba.
Zumba, we, we understand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, I was gonna say, go.
So we, Zumba's the first time any of us heard about, other than the applicant, heard about it, so we understand it wasn't applied for, it wasn't noticed for, and therefore he can't do that. If he wants to do it, he's gonna have to come back and ask for a new variance, so he's gonna discontinue that use.
Is the real estate office still operational?
No, no, they're closed.
Can he ask for the Zumba variance tonight?
No.
He didn't notice for it. We didn't know about it, unfortunately, and we're hoping to finish tonight, and if he wants to read through it, we'll have to come back and do it over.
So, and then, Mr. Chair, I'll just make a couple clarifying points, because Mr. Howard did issue like a memo as part of this application being filed, so, so there was the patio expansion, I think there was an exterior bar that was constructed, there's the temporary tent structure where they were COVID allowed to have, you know, activities out there. There was also like an outdoor stage where some music was being played, and there's also two sheds, I think, adjacent to the, to the restaurant structure that are in the front yard area, that are all, have been already constructed since COVID. The pavilion that's gonna have a shared roofline with the restaurant, has that been constructed or is that proposed right now?
It's proposed right now.
Okay, so, so everything else existing, other than the patio that's immediately west of the, so it would be the two red boxes, it's the, the right-hand red box, the one that's immediately adjacent to the restaurant, that's, that's being constructed over top of the existing patio. The red box on the left, it is a new structure technically, but what they're looking to do is convert a temporary tent structure to an actual permanent pavilion, roughly the same footprint, shifting it further into the site to be a little bit more compliant with the setbacks. I just wanted to preface that for the board's clarity.
I get it.
Is there a pathway from the restaurant to the furthest left box?
Yes.
Yeah?
What's in the back, yes.
So there's a pathway where people actually walk along the.
Yes, yes.
Dedicated path, like a concrete path.
Concrete path.
From the restaurant to that second red box.
Second red box, yes.
Yeah, I'll vouch, I'll vouch for it.
There is one there.
Yeah.
I will, too.
You walk right through there, right there.
So, Sal, two last questions before I think we move on to the engineer. So I think in Mr. Howard's letter, he had a question about like an RV camper that was like parked on the site for a long.
That'll be removed.
I moved, moved that out, you know, fogged down, it's not there anymore.
Okay, and then the last thing was, and I don't know if it's, in the, like, rightmost, the, on the right side of this picture, where the lot line kinda does that jog, when we looked at aerials, there was like two storage containers that weren't there when the 2013 approval happened.
Can I give it?
What do you use it?
What do you use the storage?
Storage for outside furniture, or?
Just, restaurant, like equipment, or chat table, like extra chat table.
So it's storage for stuff you use for the actual restaurant facility? It's not for any outside people?
No, no.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to get that on the record as part of the application for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just curious, the, the water in the back, is that a, that's your basin?
That was, yes.
Um, the structure itself is, I think the applicant said it was like 300 years old, is that, or the restaurant on this side has been? I mean, I think the parking area and the basin has been on that site, maybe not 300 years, but for a long period of time. The rules and the regs in place when that was, that basin was built probably are very different from what it is now, but I think that's been, that's been like that for, that's been there for a long time.
Definitely no swimming.
I mean, yeah, I don't think there's any records for 1747, so.
Okay, my question will tie in with, with John. Has there been, John, has there been any issues with noise from outside with anybody adjacent to this property?
There have been in the past with regards to some of the events that were going on just prior to COVID and during COVID. I believe there was a concert event that was, that was happening without our knowledge, some late-night functions. Two properties over is where most of the complaints were, were coming from. The resident there obviously, you know, had called the police several times and then eventually made, made it to us with regards to the music playing, people being outside, so, you know, any kind of.
Is this the same neighbor, do you think, hiding, cause Patterson's is right up the street? I remember us, a couple people from public coming, it was talking about the noise. So what would be the rules for that if someone, like, if I wanted to have a band out of Cookout, what would his.
So, I mean, I think like every property, public or private, commercial residential, they have to comply with the township's noise ordinance, so I guess the structure that's there now is like a canvas tent-type structure, right? They wanna put an open-air pavilion, right, sound no walls, so would the applicant have any issue with agreeing to comply with the noise ordinance? No live music after 10:00 PM?
Yes, in fact, I was just gonna stipulate.
Yeah, cause that's.
Outdoor live music would stop by 10:00 PM. Inside, they may have music, but that's unrelated to the, and we always have to comply with the noise ordinance, no matter what.
Yeah.
So 10:00 PM outdoor music would stop.
Anybody from the board, any questions for the?
I'll just give you a report on the site review that I did today.
Yes.
I inspected the property like maybe a month ago and again today, and had a conversation with the owner about, there's a lot of junk behind the garbage bins, and he's willing to remove them, he said he would do it, and there's trees that are in the center of the property that are dangerous. Should they fall and hit one of the telephone poles with the three power lines, it'd be a massive problem, plus he's building a, building outside that there's gonna be people inside, even though it's just a roof, should those trees happen to fall on that, that also would be dangerous. So he agreed to remove the trees, and I told him that would be a very good safe thing to do. And he, he agreed to clean everything up, and he had a junk vehicle, and he said he could remove it and cut the lawn. So, the parking lot was fine, there wasn't anything wrong with that, and I couldn't find anything else, you know, that was wrong. If it was wrong, I didn't know about it, you know, might have been from back in the COVID time, but the place has been there for hundreds of years, so.
So you heard the comments about the, the garbage, the trees, and the junk vehicle? You'll address all of those if the board were to approve this?
Okay, that'll be in the resolution, okay.
Right, that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions from the professionals or the board, we'll, I guess we can go to your engineer.
Remember engineer? Rob, thanks, don't leave.
No.
Rob, you were sworn in, but would you place your credentials on the record, please? We're seeking to have you qualified only as a civil engineer tonight.
Correct. I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, testifying tonight as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Over 30 years' experience in the engineering field. I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've testified before this board many a times, as well as many boards throughout New Jersey.
We accept your qualifications.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Siv, your office prepared the civil plans that were presented in support of the application?
Correct.
And one of the questions was about the subdivision. Since the original submission, after having technical meetings with the board professionals, you made several plan revisions, including the elimination of the lot line or subdivision request, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so which exhibit do you need to refer to?
We can keep up this exhibit. I don't know if it's marked into evidence yet.
It's gonna be A-10.
So it's A-10. It's just an aerial exhibit of, what I did this for was, it's actually gonna show, it shows the realignment of Adelphia Farmingdale Road or County Route 524. The reason why I put this exhibit together is there's some variances that are needed for this application. The planner will kinda go through those after I do. But what it shows is the yellow is the outbound of the property and the gray roadway that's right up against the yellow property line is where the existing pavement, well, it's not existing anymore because it's been removed in the last month or so. That's where the old road used to be. And the gray area is where the new proposed realignment's going. So what this is showing is that the left or west pavilion is currently about 35 feet from the edge of pavement from the old 524 road, and it's gonna get to about 100 feet to the edge of pavement with the new road. Similarly, the proposed pavilion that's getting attached to the building, it's gonna go from about 40 feet to the edge of pavement to about 80 feet of distance between the new road and the proposed pavilion. So we are gonna be asking for some front yard setbacks, but this exhibit kinda shows you that it's a little bit of a unique situation that the road's getting realigned, and we're gonna have a greater distance from the road to the building, even though our property line's not moving.
The old road's turning into grass, correct?
It's gonna turn into grass. And there's also proposed two basins, and what, that's what those two circles are. There's gonna be stormwater management basins, and they're actually started and to be constructed now. So it'll be grass or stormwater management basins in the front yard area. So I guess that the planner will go through that a little bit more. But short of that, Charlie's done a good job of describing what's on this exhibit. There's really no engineering. It's literally replacing the, the white box that you can see on the upper left there is the existing tent. So that's being replaced with the new pavilion, and then the second box to the right or the east of that is the addition for the pavilion over the existing paved area, or paper area. But other than that, there's really no engineering as it relates to this site.
Charlie?
So they do still need the technical relief, right? Because the property lines aren't changing. I did talk to the township engineering department. They did circulate draft plans from like 21, 22 for the relocation. So the reason the right of way is not moving, because there's like sanitary and gas infrastructure that's in the, underneath the existing road, that's all gonna be grassed. Otherwise, I would imagine the county might give it back to them. So you're gonna have that whole grassed area, and then the two basins that are being proposed there, they're all, they are gonna be biro retention basins. So there is a possibility that the landscaping can grow to a certain height and provide some additional separation and buffering. I think the only comment that I have, and, you know, maybe we can hear if there's any concerned neighbors across the street, there is a decent amount of horizontal separation, but perhaps they might be able to provide a little bit more landscaping on their site along that frontage to just give a little bit more, kinda like screening to, you know, to the roadway and things like that. I don't think we're asking for 50 feet, but something to kinda beef it up a little bit just to, to enhance it. They do need a variance for the impervious coverage, because it is increasing from what was approved in 2013. When you add up the, the new pavilion, all the patio expansion and the like, I think it's like 5,000 square feet. I don't take exception from a stormwater perspective, because it's all under the threshold of what would be a major development. You have a basin at the back of the site, and then also the county is putting in two basins in the public right of way, and you do have a lot of grass there, so that's gonna help mitigate any increase in runoff from those impervious areas. I don't see, the only other things that I think are outstanding is they do need relief of providing sidewalks in the right of way, and then also providing sidewalks from the public right of way into the site. 524 is a county road, so I don't know how many people are walking into the site, you know, to visit here. They have a pretty sizable parking area. Most people are driving. You know, I'll let the applicant maybe talk about some of the surrounding uses and properties and whether there's sidewalks. And I guess ultimately Jen will have an opinion on sidewalks and whether or not they're warranted for the application. But I think they've made a significant effort to try to eliminate a lot of the relief with the subdivision that was, that was occurring. And they've worked with us to, to kinda improve the plan. So I think this is definitely a positive from what was originally being presented.
And just to reply, we have no issue working with the board professionals to supplement the landscaping on our site between the two proposed structures and the property line. And Rob can comment on the sidewalk if, if you want.
I've obviously been here plenty of times. I know what the board and Jen's position is on sidewalk. I'll defer to the board as to whether you want them in this location or not. The only thing I will say is, based on the county plans that I've seen to date, they don't propose sidewalk in this area. The building gets kinda close to the corner in the left southwest corner, close to the roadway. And then there's also basins in that area. So I'll defer to the board. Obviously, if you want them, we will install them. But I'm not sure there's, there's not sidewalk in the area in this immediate vicinity. I, I would think it'd be better used donating it to the sidewalk fund. But again, I'll defer, we'll defer to the board on this.
Jennifer?
I, I don't see the need for sidewalk at this location. I think it actually would be dangerous. The one thing I do wanna clarify is that when I reviewed the plans, it looks like the existing restaurant is over the right of way line. Like minimally, like .2 feet, but it's into the right of way per your survey. So that's something that, like, we can't grant that, but you would have to deal with the county with respect to whatever an easement or something of that nature over the right of way line.
All right, we'll coordinate with the county. Obviously, they're doing the work out there. They're actually gonna pull the road a little bit away from that corner in that one area, so hopefully that'll help. But we'll coordinate with the county.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be close to the new road, but because they're not moving the right of way, you're technically into their property. So that's something that's gonna have to be addressed with them.
We were there first. Oh yeah, we'll work with county. We.
You may not have been there first. It might have been a stagecoach road.
That's what we have with the engineer.
And any questions from our board?
Are there any utilities gonna be run to this pavilion?
I believe they have some decorative lighting that goes around the pavilion, but short of that, I don't believe there's any other utilities.
So nothing being wired directly into it?
I would defer to the applicant as to how he's wiring.
Yeah, if you have a band, they would have to have some kind of source.
Well, the question was, you can stand there if you want. Utilities to the two structures.
Yes, this electric is already there. We did, we did the electric long back with the permit and everything. So we have the lighting there. All we have to do is some decorative lighting.
No bathrooms outside?
No, no sir.
So just electric?
Is there water for a bar facility?
There is a bar already outside, won't be in the pavilion. If we do, we do have like portable bar that we can just, service bar, small like this.
Right.
Push it over there. And then when it's done, bring it back in.
Right, so there's no connection for water?
No, there won't be no connection.
And the electric was something you put in when you did the patio itself during COVID or prior to that?
Prior to that. We applied, that was like, we took the permit to get electric, a box outside. And then, yes, that was legally, we took the electric outside, yes.
Okay, so it's.
With the permit.
We're, we're not running extension cords or anything to make this thing go?
No, sir, can't. The fire department is very strictly, they visit us every six months, so we cannot, if we want to, they won't let us, you know.
So the electricity was done by permit?
Yes, yes.
For that and everything?
It's been done by.
So, to go back to the lighting for the pavilion, so it, it's interior to the pavilion and it's downward facing? There's nothing like projecting out from the pavilion proposed as far as lighting? Like, you're not gonna have lighting on the roof line shining out to the right of way? It's just inside the pavilion downward, just for lighting inside the pavilion? Okay.
Like exactly what we have right now in our tent, will be same lighting. We do have a lighting in the tent.
Yeah.
You know, some decorated, uh, two small sandal leaves.
Okay, but it's all downward and it's inside the pavilion? There's nothing that's outward facing? Okay, cool.
Is it similar to what you, you have something, the arch pavilion brochure? Is that what it's gonna look like?
Yes.
Exactly, or something like it?
This same company that I've been talking to, they all build something like that. Just like that. What do you see on the picture from, redo from, you know, it's a, it's a free pack, package. That's what I understand.
Sal, would you, would you be willing to submit, if the board were to act favorably on the application, a lighting plan to make sure that there's no spillage of lighting over the property line? I mean, you have a couple of residences in the area, so just looking to make sure that there's no impact.
That's fine. We could do that.
Do we need to know what the structure's gonna look like? Or do we have a, do we have a plan?
We have it in the, in the, in the.
Okay.
It looks like a, like truss, like a truss across the top with columns as you go down. So it's like.
But you're, you're okay with it?
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Cedar and all that?
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Thank you, mister.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Looks good. There's no further questions? I think we can move to the planning testimony.
I have one, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure, John.
I just wanna clarify, what's going to be the future use of the real estate office?
We don't know yet. We just couldn't rent or anything. We left it that way it is when real estate office moved out.
Talking into the mic.
No, definitely.
I don't think so. They won't, they won't say. Okay, thank you. Right now is empty. And we didn't, we could not rent it to anybody. I don't know what it'd be because I didn't advertise of renting it. Right now is empty. I'm just cleaning up after this. Probably I'll come to you. I'll come to Mr. Howard, see where, if I can rent it. If they say, okay, I can rent it, then I'll advertise, see who wanna rent this.
If memory serves me correctly, it was approved as a real estate school, and you're pretty much pigeonholed to that approval. So there's, there won't be any opportunity after today unless you come back to the board to use that in any other manner, other than the real estate school that it's approved for. You understand that, correct?
Okay.
So you wouldn't be able to move in, I don't know, any other business other than a real estate school, for lack of explanation? You can't use it for restaurant use or anything like that. It's approved for something specific. So I just wanna make it clear that, moving forward, that, you know, if business goes well for you, that you're not gonna use it as another, another site for entertainment or holding smaller events. It's a real estate school, and you have no other approval other than that.
That's right. I do understand that.
Looking at the variance, the use variance was granted, so we understand we have to comply with the use variance. It says it was approved as a combination sales office and real estate training school. So unless the use is substantially similar to that, we know we have to come back to the board.
Mr. Alferi, is it, over here, a real estate school, but is that the same as selling real estate and someone teaching school in the facility? Or two different ones?
Combination sales office.
Combination. So they have to, they could do both or a school? Licensed school. But you could sell.
You could sell real estate there too.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify that, because a school's a school, but if they could go in and sell real estate, that's an, you know, another option. And teach at the same time.
Right.
Okay.
I think it's also important to note that with that variance, Sal, that you got, the board approved multiple principal uses on this lot through that variance. So even if they had to come back for some different use of that structure, they start, they would not have to revisit the multiple principal uses on the lot. That's gonna run with the land.
Okay. Okay, thank you, John, for bringing that up.
Would I call our planner?
Okay.
Allison, you were sworn in. Would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Sure. Hi.
Hi, Allison.
Allison Coffin. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Would you like to hear more?
No, cuz I've seen you here before.
I've been here a few times over the last 20 years.
We accept your qualifications.
Yeah, just for the record, we have variance relief that's required as a result of the revised plan. Although it's significantly less than what was originally proposed, we still need to put the proofs on the record. Would you please do so?
Sure. So the variance relief that we're looking at, we need a D2 use variance to expand the pre-existing non-conforming use of the restaurant, even though that was dealt with in 2013, that there are two uses on the site. The inclusion of the pavilions does increase that use. And we have existing variances for the front yard setback, the existing tavern's a little bit over that front lot line, and we have buffer variance, which is an existing condition, although that's continuing with the site plan. And proposed, we have accessory structures that are technically in the front yard, and accessory buildings in the required buffer, and a slight increase to the lot coverage. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested variances, and the variances can be granted with no detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Special reasons exist for the granting of the requested use variance to expand the uses. I mean, the site was previously found to be particularly suited to the proposed combination of uses. The site function improves with the expanded size and proposed pavilions for the restaurant. The applicant proposes changing the site by expanding the restaurant with those two new permanent pavilions covering outdoor seating areas, in addition to some patios and some other features that have been added since the 2013 approval. The pavilions themselves will enhance and improve the functioning of the use. The restaurant had begun using tents for outdoor dining during COVID, as was common, and found that their customers enjoyed the outdoor seating. The pavilions allow for this to become a permanent feature in a more aesthetically pleasing manner than the tent had been. There is no detriment to the proposed bulk variances. Some of the variances are due to pre-existing conditions, and this includes the front yard setback of the restaurant, the location of some of the existing structures in the required front yard, and the lot coverage, although we're slightly expanding that, that is a pre-existing condition. The new variances that are proposed, particularly for the location of designing dining pavilions, makes sense within the overall context of the site. These are areas that have been used for outdoor dining for several years with the temporary tent structure. The proposed permanent pavilions will be more visually appealing than the tents, and they are located in the front yard area, because that is where the restaurant itself is. But this is now a technical variance, because the realignment of the roadway will move the road further from the lot frontage, increasing the effective setback to those structures, so that they will have the appearance and function of being conforming and outside the required front yard and buffer. It's my opinion that these variances would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. Again, these uses were previously granted, their approval in 2013. The proposed expansion is limited to the outdoor dining. It involves a small increase in business activity as a result of those proposed pavilions, though this is consistent with the dining that's been happening on the site during COVID. And the overall impact of the application is to approve the appearance and functioning of the uses on the site. So it's my opinion that positive reasons do exist for the granting of the use variance and the bulk variances. They can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in a manner that is overall consistent with the intent and purpose of your master plan and development ordinance.
Okay. Jennifer?
I take no exception to the testimony provided.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
It was, uh, well presented. So do you have any questions in the board? Okay. Yeah, we're gonna open up the public. Do I have a motion?
Motion open to public, second.
Second by Matt. On favor.
Aye.
Eileen, we're gonna be opening the public.
The board will now be open to the public. If you have any questions or comments, please come up and state your name and your address.
Motion to close to the public.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
We're gonna close, uh.
The board has now closed to the public.
Professionals, any further comments? Okay. Board members? Sal?
We requested the board grant the approvals requested, but with all the conditions we've stipulated to through the testimony, and we thank the board for their time.
That's 14 words, closing statement, not bad.
I know you have another application. We're trying real quick.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion on this application.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, based on everything that we agreed upon for the different variances, and also the real estate sales in school to be included.
Second.
Guess what?
I'll second.
You'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Barullo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes, with additional conditions that Mr. O'Donnell stated as far as the cleanup of the property.
And the trees.
Stuff you agreed to, but yes.
Mr. Hughes.
I'd like to add to Mr. Cantor's list also. I heard about, they want a lighting plan too, just add that on. And with that, I say yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Robbie, yes.
Robbie, yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
I'm happy you're staying on board and how the, I like the, your business and it gives me a lot of pleasure to say yes as well. Good luck.
Application is approved.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Sounds like a rock star.
Okay. Final case tonight will be case number BA19-26A, Oakland Road LLC. Or condition, uh, use variance amended preliminary and final site plan. Applicant of Oakland Road LLC as applicant and owner seeking use variance and amended preliminary and final major site plan. Approval to utilize the existing two-story commercial office building as a daycare with associated site improvements on premise known as Block 42, Lot 23.01, 645 Oakland Road. This application was originally scheduled for January 27th, 2025, when it was carried to February 10th, 2025 with no further notice. On February 10th, 2025, the application was carried to February 24th, 2025 with no further notice. On February 24th, the application was carried to April 28th, 2025. And on April 28th, the application was carried to 9/25. Expiration June 9th, 2025. Mr. Jackson, it's really good to see you here. I've gone, no more carrying this application for a change.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Opening statement?
Thank you. Uh, just very briefly, John Jackson, on behalf of Oakland. I'm here with Mr. Siv, Mr. Kennel, Christine Caphone. Um, and, uh, what, what we're looking to do is, uh, put in a daycare center on Oakland Road. This was previously approved in the building standing. It looks just like it does. Can we put up the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Um, that's being handed out. The, the building looks, is there and it looks just like it does in the rendering. Um, so what we would like to do is, uh, transform this into a daycare center. Um, my, my clients, uh, are going to serve a particular niche of the community and, um, we, we have hours that are limited, um, very specific focus. And, uh, we'll, we'll basically have, uh, four rooms, uh, for, for children's daycare. And if the operation is such that we'll be out by four in the afternoon, um, we're offering to have that as a condition of approval. Our particular demographic, it's, they're early. Um, we, we also have Mr. Scott Kennel here. So with your permission, um, if I can have Mr. Siv sworn, he'll give the quick engineering over you. Very little engineering because it's an existing building.
Do you want them all sworn in at some time?
Sure. Ruth, could you come up too?
Do you affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Sorry, yeah. State your name, sir, Mr. Siv.
Robert Siv, S-I-V-E, professional engineer still.
Christine Caphone, licensed professional planner. Ruth Silver, R-U-D-H-U-L-U-N-O-V, Director of Operations.
And Ruth has, uh, expertise in managing and setting up, uh, daycare centers. So should be providing testimony about operations.
Okay.
Sure. V-A-V-U-L-U-N-O-V.
Lot of vowels.
Oh, yeah.
Scott Kennel, McDonnell and Ray Associates Traffic Expert.
Witnesses are sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Siv's been here many times. You've recognized him.
Yes, and anyway, he just stated his records, uh, up for the last application, so we accept his qualifications. I don't think they changed much in the last hour.
Mr. Siv, with the board's permission, can you please give an overview of the application? I know we have the PowerPoint up, so if we can, uh, just go to, uh, I guess page, uh, three of the PowerPoint would be a good way to sign it, sort it out.
And this property has a little bit of history. I'll be brief, but I'll just give you the history real quick. Um, this site contains approximately 14.9 acres, has approximately 300 feet of frontage along the old Oakland Road leg of the property and has wetlands within the center portion of the site associated with Tarkland Brook. Now, this site had two previous approvals, both use variance and site plan approval. In 2018, there was a site plan approval for a towing yard, which consisted of a 4,000 square foot office warehouse building, a tow yard with a storage area for approximately 40 vehicles and other accessory improvements. Then, in 2021, there was site plan approval to replace the towing yard with a two-story, approximately 14,607 square foot office building. This approval included access driveway from Oakland Road, which circulates through the front westerly portion of the site and a P-loop fashion around the building, which you can see on the colored rendering on the board. The driveway provides access to 49 parking stalls. The site is served by a stormwater management basin along the southerly property line and a septic system within the westerly front portion of the property. The balance of the site, which is approximately 13 acres, will remain wooded. Now, the office building approval was perfected and site improvements were installed. And to date, the stormwater management system has been installed, which is along the, like I said, the southerly property line. The building has been constructed, which is in the center of that P-loop, but has not been internally fit out. And the site lighting, curbing, and parking subbase has been installed, which is the gray area around the building. So again, similar to the last application, from a engineering standpoint, there's not a lot of engineering remaining. The site has been constructed in accordance with the office building approval. Um, what we're here tonight is to basically convert that approval to a daycare. There are a few proposed improvements, which I'll get into unless anybody has any questions on the existing site. But the proposed improvements include a outdoor play area that is typical for a daycare. That outdoor play area is proposed in the, I'll call it the north westerly corner of the site just behind or just to the north of the existing parking lot area.
So Rob, before we leave that?
Yep.
How big is that?
That play area?
Yep.
I've got an area for you. It is approximately 620 square feet.
So what exactly are you proposing to put in there?
I will leave that to the...
It just seems pretty thin for the number of students you're proposing.
Understood.
So I, I would, I, you guys need to think about figuring out a way to leave that up.
And does the state license, like, through licensure, regulate how much outdoor recreation area you need? And does that meet that requirement?
It does. And, uh, out of no disrespect, I'll refer to Ruth. This Ruth, there's too many vowels for me as well.
I mean, I'm getting that the area works, but it's like, it's like a long, narrow strip, uh, you know, that... I don't know if, you know, it may meet the area requirements, but the functionality of it is, in my opinion, a little questionable. So it's not something that, Rob, I need you to address. I'm just bringing it up before I forget about it because... Like, it's, it, I guess, it, it meets the area requirement. I'll, you know, I, I don't know, so I'll take them obviously at their word. But it's so long and narrow. So yeah, the square footage is there, but is it really functional?
I understand the question. I'm not disagreeing. I'll leave that to Ruth because I am not a playground layout expert by any stretch of the imagination, so.
It looks like a, like a kennel run, like.
Yeah.
Is there room to, uh?
There's some room to expand that. And like I said, I'll let Ruth get into doing that.
I mean, I would actually, I mean, I know you have Scott Kennel here and I know you're parked per our ordinance, but my experience with daycares is that you don't need that many parking spaces because the parents are not there all the time. They drop off, they, they pick up and you have your staff there. You know, I would support relief of the parking requirement in an attempt to make a more functional play area for the kids because I see those daycares on a regular basis. They're crazy in the morning and at pickup, but the parents aren't staying for long periods of time. You know, they're in and out. And especially in that back corner, there may be something that could be done.
Ability to eliminate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Something to think about, just because I get that you don't want, like, it's parked per ordinance, but I think it's, could be potentially overparked.
Understood.
So if you did something like this, you know, with that?
Correct. That's what we're talking about.
Can you, okay, if you could just outline a potential, uh, solution for that where adjacent spaces you could potentially eliminate on the...
Yeah, we just talked about eliminating the north westerly three or four parking stalls and we can let Mr. Kennel get into how many parking stalls we need. And if the reduction of four parking stalls is satisfactory, that's where we would remove them from. Yeah. The only other planned changes are we're providing the EV parking stalls for the new EV standard and then we are proposing an identification sign. It will need a variance. The planner will get into the sign itself. Those are the proposed site improvements. Again, it's a developed site short of what's going inside the building.
All right. So with your permission, um, there are just a, a couple of points on Mr. Cunliffe's letter where he talks about things that are required. Can you just touch on them? He talks about, um, you know, the, the previous waivers given for, uh, uh, sidewalks, et cetera. Can you please, uh, address that? And then also, there was a question about fire suppression. How would we handle that?
So referring to Mr. Cunliffe's June 6th, 2025 letter, he outlines three waivers on Sheet 3. The first waiver is for lighting where .5-foot candles over the entire area is required. That's an average where we see that. That's an older lighting standard that the waiver was granted for. Usually you want .5 as a minimum and then you have higher throughout the site. So that waiver was granted as part of the office building site plan. We're carrying that through to this site plan. Similarly, sidewalks and the sidewalks to the buildings were granted as a waiver for this application as part of the office building. Again, there's no sidewalk in this area. I'm presuming the contribution was made at that time because we got to this point where we are and we would request the sidewalks to be waived again. The last waiver is for a loading area. Obviously, for a daycare, you wouldn't need a loading area as it relates to trucker, trailer, or truck traffic. Um, so we're asking for that waiver. Those are the waivers associated with this application.
Okay. Any other technical, uh, things in Mr. Cunliffe's letter that we would jump to?
I believe the only, uh, technical items that would be remaining as it relates to site engineering is Mr. Cunliffe wanted to confirm that we have a permeable surface for whatever size play area we're proposing, which we talked about earlier today and we will do. Um, I know the state has some standards for the old astroturf, whatever you want to call it in today's world. Um, but we will meet the permeable standards for our conversations with Mr. Cunliffe.
Yeah, so, so a lot of daycares, instead of putting grass or mulch or something like that, they put in turf. So the state regulates that as an impervious surface, so they're just going to need to provide stone underneath that. We're not looking for them to expand the basin that's already been constructed. Just provide stone to make sure that there's no, you know, excess runoff generated from, from that area. So, and then there was, so just to clarify, so the site's basically built and the structure's there. Their, the lighting, there's no change to the lighting that was approved. And as far as like hours of operation, office versus a, a daycare, offices might have people stay, you know, a little bit later beyond like 5:00, 6:00 PM, right? At daycare, I imagine, you know, as someone who has a kid in daycare, like, I'm usually the last person rolling up at 6:30 and like, there's only one person left in the, so, so most times of the year, I feel kind of bad when I show up like that late, but, uh, most times of the year, right, like, they're, they're closing before, uh, you know, the, the sun's, uh, going down and there's a need for a light, so I don't take issue with it. Uh, I had a question in my letter because I think what was originally submitted, there was two different renderings of the architectural plans with the number of classrooms. And can you just clarify for that, for the board? Because when we calculate parking requirements, it's, it's not based off of the number of students, it's based off of the number of classrooms. Uh, so that makes a difference. I think when we updated our letter, there's one rendering that shows nine classrooms. There's another rendering that shows eight classrooms. I just think we want to know what's actually being proposed.
So what's being proposed is eight classrooms.
Okay. So it's the gross floor area, right? Nothing's changing because the building's already constructed. It's just one classroom is going to have a larger space than, instead of being split up into two different spaces.
Correct.
Okay.
And the only other thing I wanted to add, and I, I'm sorry, did I cut you off, Charlie?
No, no, you can go.
Was, we did have a letter from the Howell Fire Bureau. Um, because this is getting converted from an office building to a daycare, it does require fire suppression, which we are proposing to do. And we are proposing an underground storage tank in the rear part of the property, partially under the paved area, partially in the grassed area to provide that underground storage tank for the water.
Rob, can you talk about the fence?
The fence, which...
So the, you, on your plan, it shows a proposed six-foot-high vinyl fence on your northern property line, which is in our buffer.
Yes, so that was actually part of the office building site plan approval. At the time, the board required us to install a six-foot-high vinyl fence from roughly the front property line back to the existing tree line. Um, that fence was installed as part of that site plan approval. It's there today. We do provide the 50-foot dimensional buffer to the residential property to our north. That's part of an agreement with him because he was at the last meeting when we had the office building. He also wanted us to install the fence, which was done.
And so you received that buffer relief as part of the site plan approval for the office?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Siv, just to, uh, go through, uh, the review letters, we have a letter from, uh, County Momma's Department of Youth and Human Services. Uh, that's satisfactory. They're really...
They've just indicated that there's an open well and septic permit on the property. That's obvious because the building isn't completed yet and we will close that out as part of any future development.
Howell Fire, uh, 9/26, uh, you addressed that, right? You're going to have the sprinkler system and the storage?
That's correct.
Farmer's advisory, no comment on September 26th, correct?
Correct.
Uh, then we have another memorandum, uh, from the Department of Human Services, uh, September 27th. Same thing, basically, right? It's just detailed, four plans must be approved. We'll comply with that, correct?
I'm sorry, you went so fast. I missed it.
Right here. I'm looking at this one.
That's the Health Department, yes.
We addressed that already. So the, the next one is Environmental Commission, no comments.
No comment.
Shade Tree Commission, no comment.
Correct.
And then, of course, we have the review letters from, uh, Mr. Cunliffe and Ms. Beam. You've addressed Mr. Cunliffe. We'll have our planner, Ms. Caphone, address, uh, Ms. Beam's letter. So, um, basically an existing building, we're just making some interior changes to an open building and a couple tweaks and that's really basically from a engineering and site plan standpoint.
That's correct.
And the building's up there, right?
The building is there, yes.
And it looks just like in the rendering on page three?
Yes.
Okay. So those are all the questions I have of Mr. Siv.
I have a quick question. Are the classrooms going to be on two floors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so one last clarifying question. So, uh, and I talked about this with Mr. Siv earlier today. So, uh, you are providing like a crosswalk from the building sidewalk over to the play area, but with reconfiguring that play area, if that's something the board wants to see with losing a couple spaces, uh, we can like kind of improve that to make a little bit more ADA compliance for wheelchairs to get over there?
Yes, we can.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Got a question.
Yeah. Yeah, Nick?
Mr. Siv, um, the, you mentioned the, uh, what, what was going to be the source of the, uh, the water service for the fire suppression system?
There's going to be an underground storage tank on the site with the well.
An underground storage tank, okay. And, and, and the Fire Bureau knows this? Do they, they approve that? Or is that something, is that approval through something else?
It's usually approved through the building construction side of things, but we will provide that information as part of our resolution compliance to them to address their letter.
For size and gallons and pumping capabilities?
Correct.
Okay.
And Rob, that's partially under the parking area, the existing parking area?
That is correct.
Drive off. It, has that been surface paved or is that just base paved right now?
It's just base paved. It's not even base paved. It's only, uh, subbase.
Oh, okay. All right, good. So we're not ripping up brand-new pavement to put that in?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there backup power generation?
Is there backup power gen, oh, generator?
Generator, yeah.
Um, that will be part of what they have to do. There is going to be a, a drafting station as part of that where they can pull the water out of it.
But also for electric, right?
Yes.
So where's that going to be on the plans?
The tank and all associated equipment will be in the back westerly portion of the site. It's hard to see on the rendering, but if you look at the site plans that were submitted, you'll see a rectangular box on the plan and it's in that, in this area of the site.
And the generator is included in that area? I think what they're asking is, are you proposing a generator?
Oh, are you proposing a generator?
Yes.
Um, not that I'm aware of.
When power gets knocked out, you got to pump, is that right?
Uh, I believe, uh, I'll leave that up to the Fire Department. I believe they have that on their equipment.
All right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that part I don't know. That would be worked out as part of the building department backup permit.
Automatic sprinkler system has to have capability on its own without the fire department having to, um, supply. Sprinkler system, it doesn't need the fire department to...
So, so Rob, right, so the building is going to need to be fire suppressed by code and that's in the Fire Bureau's memo. The existing well on site, that's going to pump into the actual tank for fire suppression purposes. The tank's going to be underground and then there's going to be a pump that, if it's a fire... and then there's going to be a pump that, if it's a fire, provides the pressure as needed to the interior irrigation system.
But if there's loss of power, there needs to be backup power to make that pump operate.
And not only that, it's also for ADA. You need the elevator running to get any potential, if there's any students that are disabled on the second floor.
Yeah, so what I would say is, if the board wants to know where the generator's going to go, that would be something we can ask of the operator. And then, and Mr. Siv can, I know you're not, is there an architect here, John?
Uh, no.
I thought the structure that was proposed, it looks like it's gable roof, but I think the, it's like a mansard roof, and then there is like a, like a flat roof on the interior, if I'm not mistaken, I thought on the structure, where there is like mechanical. So if there didn't need to be a generator on the roof for like the building elevator, I'm sure they could provide one there. And then if there didn't need to be one next to the pump house at the east or back portion of the site, I mean, I think there is some room adjacent to that where they could provide a generator there, too.
We can agree to provide a generator whether it's required or not. Probably is common sense, right? And with the elevator, that's another issue as well. We likely have room up on the roof, so we will agree to do that as a matter of the board's recommendation.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we all concur with this.
That I do not know.
So you're agreeing to install a generator?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll comply with code. It's probably required, but regardless...
If it isn't, you will.
Regardless, we'll do it.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Anybody else with questions? Professionals, board members? My questions will probably be more towards traffic and the operations. The only thing that might tie into you, Mr. Siv, is the eliminating some of these parking spots. I do think we need to make sure that there is going to be a safety area, children going back and forth. So that would be part of the stipulation with that, because where it is right now, I can see a safety issue, people coming in around that. So would that be something that the applicant would be...
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
That would be worked out with Mr. Cunliffe. I imagine followers or a guardrail or some kind of sturdy structure that would prevent, of course, so we would agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, so my next witness is Ruth Zolunov, Zavulunov, I'm sorry, Zavulunov. And she's Operations, she'll provide testimony regarding the Operations, number of children.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. So I have been a Director of Operations and an Administrator in licensed daycares in this area, in the Jersey area, primarily on Lakewood. I've done a few others for the past 10 years. Ran daycares, started them for people, and been involved in operations on every level, so I can take any question. I'm just going to give a little synopsis of the building and operations and how we work. It is a two-floor building. We do have a playroom on each floor.
So if we can turn to the plans...
Can I just, John, can I, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Are you being, is this witness being qualified as an expert in any kind, or just operation testimony?
Operations, and she does have expertise beyond the ken of an ordinary person, so yes, and an expert in daycare operations.
Okay, is there any licenses one gets from the state or?
Many years of experience.
I'm just asking. I don't know what the qualifications.
Yeah, neither do I. That's a good point, Andy, so I don't...
Of course.
Yeah, and your counsel, under the New Jersey rules of evidence, even if they were applicable, if somebody has knowledge, experience beyond the ken of an ordinary person, they can give testimony in that field that ordinary people wouldn't necessarily know. So that's what we're offering Ms. Zavulunov as. She's operated and managed many daycares, and she's going to give testimony as to what the requirements are for children, how the setup will be, et cetera. Dropping off, picking up, et cetera, and...
Okay, I think we're good with that.
Sure. Okay, so it's a two-floor story building. It's owned for, we're hoping for 175 children. That's roughly 72 families. That's, you know, based on a 2.5 children per family. Most parents who drop off, drop off more than one child, so it's roughly 2.5. So again, it's 72 families that will be, you know, hopefully sending to this daycare. 72 families, and some of them are staff members. So some of them will be parking and dropping off, and some of them will be dropped off by their spouse and working there with their children.
So I just want to, you're talking about the number of children, number of cars. That's based on your experience, mostly dealing with the, I'll call it the observant Jewish population in the area?
Yes.
And that's the demographic that we'll be catering to in this?
Yes.
So would you agree that, you know, there are some customs and mores that are specific to that segment of the population?
100%.
And that's what you're speaking about?
That's what I'm speaking about, yes.
So if we could look at Page 4 on the PowerPoint presentation, that's the floor plan. So this has a layout. It's a little hard to read from here, but it's basically, can you just describe what we're looking at, the number of classrooms?
Sure, so there are four classrooms.
I don't know if this will help.
I'll use your paper. I'll use this.
Do you have a queen?
It's too far. Okay, so we have four classrooms here, a baby room, you know, and then goes up by age. There's a staff room, and we have an indoor playroom.
Can you see that for, you see where I'm pointing?
Yeah.
That's what.
So that's a classroom. We have one classroom down here. Let's start with the newborn room.
The L-shaped one, that's a classroom?
That's a classroom.
Okay.
And then we had a staff room, a break room, right past the steps over there. I'll do it. I could do that. Okay.
Which plane is it?
This is the first floor, right? No, this is the second. What'd you give me? They're basically, they're copied here, first floor plans, okay. So you walk in, and there is a playroom right there. That's an indoor playroom, which is very much a need for children when it rains and, you know, you can't go outside. There's a baby room, one room here, staff room, second room, third room, and fourth room. Same thing on the second floor.
What's in the internal section? There's like a box. What is that?
There's some bathrooms and an elevator shaft, and some electric rooms and stuff like that. You see them laid out. It's all according to, these plans are made according to license regulations, the amount of staff and children per bathrooms that are needed. It's all licensed in Chapter 52. It's carbon copied for whatever they need to function.
Chapter 52, that's the New Jersey state law that governs this?
Licensing, correct, yeah.
While we're on that topic, we'll go through the layout in a minute. Can you just explain to the board, what's the process for getting a licensure? Before you can open your door and have your first person come in, what has, what do you...
We start with the plans. You submit it to the Office of Licensing, open application, and they have to approve everything on these plans. The spacing, the amount of bathrooms, the amount of sinks, your exits, ADA compliant, making sure that children can get in and out. They will approve where the playground is, how big it is. You know, if children can get to it safely, if they can't get to it safely, they will not let you open with any of this. They won't let you. She'll come down, make sure you have your water testing, your read-on testings. Everyone has to be carried and fingerprinted for criminal records. We run a very, very tight shipped licensed compliant daycare, and we don't move past that. She comes in whenever she wants and however she wants.
She, you refer to someone who works for the state?
The state. She's a, yeah, certified by the state for licensing, and we run a very, very compliant center. And everything goes according to code and according to township code. We have to give them all their fire safety things and everything, and any inspection that has to happen, any permit that has to come through has to come to them. They approve that everything happened according to law, safety, and functionality.
So of course, in addition to meeting the board's requirements, we also have to...
100%.
Meet the state requirements. We need both.
We need everything.
Okay, so we're going through the first floor. You showed the bathrooms, the size of the rooms, the play area.
Two things that are very important for licensing is exits, one in the back and one in the front. Because there is no exit per classroom, there has to be a fire suppression system, obviously, but for licensing, you don't always have to have that. There's enough bathrooms per staff and per student in the building. Even though this first floor, I think almost no one here will be toilet trained by the end of your school year, so they would really be needing all those bathrooms, but you still need to put them in for licensing purposes. So even though most of those bathrooms will be being used for staff members, it still needs to be this amount for this building.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Sure.
Do you need to add extra exit doors to the building that weren't originally put in for the...
No, you only need two, a front and a back.
And we have three here. We have the front.
Right, and you have a front. So two is a requirement, and the third is an extra for functionality.
That's one of my questions. We're already there.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we're already there. We're past that mark, yes. Okay, same thing with the second floor, if you don't mind moving it over to the second floor. Who does that? Here we are. Is that it? No, there we go. Thank you. Okay, so this indoor playroom is a little bit bigger because the children on this floor are over two and a half years old. Licensed compliant, you don't necessarily need an indoor playroom, but it's something for functionality that every daycare needs if they have the room for it. There are four classrooms here, four older children. And you see there's a bathroom over here. They try to put the bathrooms in the classroom if possible. There are sinks, there are two exits down the steps, and there's an elevator shaft over there. There's also a break room up on top, so the teachers who teach on this floor do not have to go downstairs. If, you know, if a class needs them backup, they're right there. As always, classrooms always ratio, they're always staffed properly according to license regulations. And let's talk about drop-off and pick-up for a minute. So this building, again, is going to be roughly, I would say about 72 families dropping off their children every day, 29 staff members, give or take a little bit more. Many of those staff members, I would say roughly at least a half, will probably be working in this building. It is hopefully going to be servicing the Howell community. So we're hoping that everyone here is from Howell, will be sending their kids, and they want to work with their children. Like, if they were working out on Lakewood and driving out, they're coming back here. They're working here. They want to stay close to home, and they want, you know, it's easier for them, it makes more sense for them. Next, drop-off and pick-up, okay? So drop-off generally starts at 8:45. We never start earlier than that. 8:45 is usually a slow drop-off. By 9 o'clock, it picks up. By 9:30, you know, almost everyone's there. 9:45, the straggler. So it's an hour process. It usually takes around five minutes per parent to drop with the kids, usually on the rush, and they want to leave. So they drop off and they leave. Pickup generally starts at 2:45, also a little bit slower. 3:00 to 3:15 is a little bit more. By 3:30, 90% of the building is out. By 3:45, and the few stragglers by 4 o'clock. I, since COVID, have yet to had anyone that came to pick up past 4 o'clock. We used to do the 5 o'clock's and 5:30's, but has all changed in the past four years. 4 o'clock, everyone's gone and everyone's home. And I would say even by 3:30, you usually have like four or five kids left in the building.
Would you be willing to stipulate to a condition that 4 o'clock is closing time?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, I don't see any problem on that. I think that would be absolutely doable. Yes.
Do you have school buses?
No, we don't do school buses. It's all private car pool, drop-off and pick-up.
So if students are gone at 4, and that's fine, would you think that some of your teachers may stick around, do some office work till 5 or 6? I just want to put that out there.
No. I don't think so.
Do you think to get up at daycare?
I'm not a parent.
When Charlie's the last one to show up...
You got the wrong guy here. I'm not a parent.
When Charlie's the last one to show up, there's probably like one or two staff members left there, and they're like stomping their feet waiting to leave.
100%.
Like, has a bag on their shoulder. Like, the minute you take your kid, they're out the door right behind you.
100%.
I have a few questions that are all related to the fact that I'm not a parent, so bear with me when I do it.
Ask away, no problem, sure. But I just want to answer the playground a little bit back there. So license requirement is actually double the size that it needs to be. It's obviously very thin, right? Is it doable? Anything's doable. It would hold at least one class at a time, ratio-wise.
Right, but what could you put in that little...
So I've done even smaller than this. Obviously, the bigger the better. I love the idea of adding parking spots. It's brilliant.
Do you think it would detract to take away a couple parking spots from an operations standpoint?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Would you rather make that trade?
100%.
I would strongly advocate, even if it requires a variance on the parking, because...
Yeah, the other side...
You have a lot of kids in this facility, and...
No, it's great. It's always great to have more...
Outdoor space, I think it's always a good thing.
Absolutely.
The other piece is that there are two indoor playgrounds, so that's always, there's a lot of room for kids to have gym space and running space, you know, besides this outdoor piece.
Can I ask three clarifying questions?
Sure.
So the first one, I know the architectural plan you have up has a bunch of different age ranges, more specifically on the first floor, but what's like the general age range from youngest to oldest for the daycare?
This is how we function.
No, like, what's the oldest?
I think the second floor is four and a half years old. They start out at four, and they end off sometimes before their fifth birthday, sometimes after.
So is it kindergarten?
Kindergarten.
It is kindergarten.
If that's what you call kindergarten, yes.
Kindergarten, okay. So like infant to kindergarten?
Infant to kindergarten.
Okay, so and then the second one, so we said no school buses, but do they ever have any like off-site activities where like people would be shuttling them off-site or anything like that?
No, safety regulations is a very hard thing to do, so we stay away from it.
Okay, and then the third thing is, are there any like a couple time a year, like major events where everyone comes for like a graduation or like some kind of...
Mother's Day tea?
Yeah, something like that?
Right, so generally, we do it once a year, graduation, not even every place, but that's probably, if we do it, that's when we do it. We don't do orientations. We don't do teacher's night, parent night. We don't do that. And generally, it's really, if we do it, it's for the graduation and only for the two oldest grades at the end of the year. So on these plans, I think it's just for three classrooms.
Okay, so those...
And you do a classroom at a time?
One classroom at a time, for sure.
Yeah, so, okay, so those, once or twice a year, for those individual classrooms, you could have people coming for, and actually parking on the site. More often than not, it's just coming and going during that one-hour timeframe between 2:45 to 3:45?
Yes, and even within that class that they're coming, I would say a lot of those mothers are going to be staff members, so they're already onsite.
And is that, do you schedule the graduations to be the time before or after the drop-off and pick-up? So it doesn't come in conflict with pick-up and drop-off?
Usually, yeah, it usually happens during the day.
Tell them not to.
Yeah, whoever asks. It usually happens during the day. It's just the functionality things for a daycare. We don't want it to happen when parents are dropping off newborns, so we usually keep it separate. It's just easier, and it's more of a functionality thing.
Would you have a staff member out there during drop-offs and then pickups just to be an extra set of eyes? Because I know you have parents coming in, going out. This, you know, that's one thing I think could be, should be addressed, is the safety of that.
100%. Generally, we do have a director outside.
Okay.
Are there any special events, or if we celebrate holidays, where there's, where the parents come, you know, for the holidays?
So usually not in a group setting. These parents, a lot of them work, and it's very hard for them to take off work. So we try to shy away from those things in general.
If it's a holiday where everybody's home, you're not going to daycare?
We are not going to daycare.
Are there any hours of operation on a weekend, Saturday and Sunday, or is this strictly Monday through Friday?
Never, Monday through Friday.
So there'll be nobody in the building come the weekend?
No one in the building on the weekend, no.
And no problem stipulating to that as a condition of approval?
No.
How about during the day, like lunch or food? How do you handle? Do you have a kitchen? Do you have storage?
So generally, they vendor it out, meaning it comes from a vendor, gets delivered usually by 10 o'clock in the morning, dropped off in the kitchen. It's a one-delivery guy that comes and drops it off. That's generally how it works. It's a very quick system, and it comes in warmers, and they serve it, you know, between 12 and 1 o'clock.
So no cooking onsite or...
No cooking onsite, generally. They can, licensed, it could be approved, but it's a very, again, you have to have a specific kitchen, specific things, and, you know, all the health.
So when you say kitchen, is that in the break room, the staff break room space?
So we're not, they're not planning on making a commercial kitchen here, so it's just a break room for teachers.
Gotcha, all right, that's, yeah, so there's no kitchen space?
No.
It's just a break room for the employees, and then, so all the food is made off-site, brought in, and then the teachers may break it up and then distribute to the individual classes?
Correct.
Okay, and then now my non-parent question.
Sure.
Only because I don't think I've ever heard of this before, and I could be 1,000% wrong, but 175 children? I don't think I've ever heard any daycare that handles that many. And I'm more addressing like the size of the building. How do we know how many kids are safely in a two-story building? And is this unusual to have 175 children?
It's actually quite low. I usually generally have done daycares in the 250 range. This is a very nice-sized daycare. It's not too small. It's not too big. It's only 30 staff members, so they enjoy that. It's not like, you know, 75. And there are three exits plus an elevator, so that's really a lot of areas for everyone to get out safely if they need to.
I'm sure the formula of square footage for how many, okay.
And this is a very spacious building. There's two playrooms, but also it's not licensed required to have two playrooms, but for functionality, daycares do put them in if they can, if they have a space for it. So there's a lot of functionality here that's going on beyond the license requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Would the applicant have an issue with agreeing to a cap on the number of classrooms at eight classrooms?
We would agree to that. That's what our case is based on, and we agree. That'll be our state licensure, and that's the number.
Okay.
Just for clarification of the record, because I think I pretty much know the answer, but however many kids you have in the room, the number of staff is dictated by the state, correct? Like, you can't just have 20 kids in the room with one staff member. You have to have, consistent with what the state regulations are.
Correct, and I think on the plans, they wrote exactly that.
They do, in the architecture. I just wanted it to be clarified for the record, that's all.
Anyone else?
Is there a room for sick children?
So there is a designated area that they need to use for this. It's generally in the office so that the staff member could be there when the parent comes. That's usually what they do. They have a little sick area in the office. That's usually what they do, they have a little sick area in the office.
And how many would that hold if children were sick? One, two, four?
This office could hold two, but they could use, sometimes they use the staff break room as a backup. For sure two in this office. So I have a, is that the secretary?
I would say it's probably pretty quick to call when the kid hits a fever, one-on-one point five, or has some kind of diaper issue. The phone is ringing and they are like, come now. They're not going to hold the kid all day. They want you to come right then and there. Is that correct?
Hundred percent, yes.
Understood, but that is a requirement of chapter fifty-two, that you have a sick room. Um, kids are going to sleep?
Of course.
In cribs, mats?
Sure, so zero newborns through eighteen months, we, you could do, it's a crib or a mat, from eighteen months and over, we slowly phase out to cribs, to mats. You could still keep them in a crib, license required, but they do generally phase them out at eighteen months. Um, the younger ages from zero to, to full year infants, they need a evacuation crib, one per four in a classroom. So you'll generally have those plus the regular cribs in the classroom. It's, it's a special, I mean, it's a crib that has special wheels, it's heavy, has strong metal on it, and it can hold up to four kids in a crib. Um, so you'll have those. Past, I would say, eight, between eighteen months and two-year-olds, they're phasing out to mats. Um, until four-year-olds, they need to rest at least a half hour. Three and four-year-olds need to have a half hour of rest time, whether they're actually sleeping or not. So there are going to be those mats and they will be used.
Okay. And is there any room, temporary room separation devices that are used, based on group sizes?
Group sizes, meaning it's past fifteen, you're saying the fif-?
Yes.
The fifteen for the thing, say, of course, in each classroom, depending on how many kids are in that room, they'll divide it in the classroom and that's licensed.
Right, but there's a structure that divides the class.
They don't structure, no, you don't, I, as far, from my experience by the licensers, they don't make you put a structure, as long as the group is physically divided. Crib, you know, ten cribs here, five cribs there, two teachers, you know, the three teachers and the two, then it's fine. They don't make you put up a physical divider.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have just two questions. There's no microwaves in any of the rooms for, uh, classes?
No.
For cooking or popcorn, anything like that?
No.
Of the twenty-nine employees that you have as staff, is anybody qualified in first aid for injury or something like that?
Of course, it's licenser card to have two per floor. We like to have everyone, so sometimes we'll have like a group training. I'm very into that for safety, like two is, you know, if someone's out that day, it's never enough, but licenser card is two per floor. But again, we, sometimes when it works out, with like community groups, I'll send everyone, I'll be like, I'd just rather everyone have it, but in general, it's two per floor.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Nick?
What hours do your, does your staff show up to work?
So it's generally the same as the students, um, eight forty-five will have.
Eight forty-five to nine forty-five?
Yeah, eight forty-five, they come and they leave at four. We do have the ones that come at eight forty-five, the ones that come at nine as they stagger drop off, we stagger our staff coming in. Um, I usually have one person in the building fifteen minutes before the same, first person comes in. That's like a functionality piece and all depends on the community and where the daycare is situated, but generally, that's what's done.
Okay, and your plans have already been submitted to the state and approved?
No, we're waiting.
Oh, so this has to happen first and then you submit your plans to the state? Okay.
So the resolution would be based on them getting the right permits from the state?
Okay.
Yeah, so if anything changed from like the enrollment or the number of classrooms or the hours of operation and then like from what was presented, obviously they would have to come back to the board.
Yeah, exactly.
For that condition.
Um, it's been a while since my son was in daycare. I'm just curious, you said it's open to residents of Howe or is, is it a private or you have to have certain criteria to go to this daycare?
No, at this point, I think it's just going to be a community daycare. I don't foresee anyone wanting to travel far out coming in and there's enough people in the area that are looking for service.
Okay.
To make their lives easier.
Okay. So I have, uh, the only other thing would be for the traffic, so. Everybody's good?
Amazing, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, I guess we're.
With, with your permission, if we can call Mr. Scott Kennel next, he's our traffic consultant. And he's appeared here, I think, at the time or two this week.
I think Mr. Kennel heard that.
Mr. Kennel, was there another guy, traffic guy in the state or is it just?
Yeah, well, I also have two partners, but they're busy tonight, so.
Okay.
You got me.
So Mr. Kennel was of course offered as a traffic expert, um, and with your permission, do you want to give the board your analysis?
Yes, I will. Uh, we, we initially had a report dated October seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and then we've had supplemental traffic studies that have been issued to the board. Uh, but basically our report went through the fact that, um, this type of use will have a higher traffic generation than was previously considered by the board. And we, we've focused on, I guess what's really important is the intersection of Old Oakland Road and Glen Road, and we analyzed that intersection and determined that we have a good level of service. I think it's also important to note that, and it's tough to see on the, um, graphic that's up there, but as part of the office building approval, there was, at the intersection of Old Oakland Road and Old Oakland Glen Road, there was going to be striping and consistent with, don't block the box, because there was concerns of traffic from five forty-seven backing up towards that intersection, blocking the intersection. Uh, and I've been out at this site numerous occasions during the timeframes that we've talked about and for all intents and purposes, yes, there's a lot of traffic that's processed through the county road intersection, but it does function well and I, I don't recall seeing traffic queued up back towards Old Glen Road. But to be conservative, we agreed to that as part of the office development and that would be implemented as part of this, uh, this daycare center if the board is, grants favorable approval. Uh, there was discussion about, well, I guess concerns about the intersection of Route five forty-seven and Oakland Road and how that operates. And in particular, the left turn movement heading south towards, towards Lakewood. And the original analysis showed that that left turn would operate at F-level service, which was not dictated or representative of my observations. So we took another level and did what we call a gap study. And basically, we have someone stationed at the intersection to determine, um, how traffic is platoon through the area and how efficient that left turn movement could be. And we've submitted, uh, made two submissions to T and M and to the board that indicated that there is more than adequate capacity to accommodate the left turn movement south on a five forty-seven. And we considered the timeframe for, for dismissal, which, again, we committed to a four o'clock end time and traffic volumes are lower prior to four o'clock. The commuter period generally starts ramping up even more than after four. So in my opinion, that is, that is a favorable, uh, operational condition, that we're having traffic, um, in classes and students dismissed during the lower traffic volume periods. But basically, the analysis we've submitted indicated that, uh, there is adequate capacity for people to make left turns south on Route five forty-seven without queuing back towards the Old Glen Road intersection. As far as the question about eliminating three or four parking spaces, it's my opinion that based on the, the number of students, the staff, the number of staff that actually have students in the daycare center, it's my opinion that, um, this site could still function well if there was the loss of three or four spaces to expand the playground area.
Could that be made safe with, uh, guardrail or ballards or something like that to make it?
Yes, it can. I mean, I myself, twenty years ago in the daycare center, and we had provided guiderails around that and provided ballards to, as well, to be, uh, very, um, safe and protected area.
So in your view, does this work?
Yes, given, given the operational aspects of this, the site layout, the, uh, the parking, this is, would be a good use for this property. Um, the one thing it has as far as, Charlie, I think you had a comment as far as sightlines at, coming out at Old Oakland Road and looking towards the southeast. Uh, my observation indicates that we have clear sightlines, but if there's, there's a need to mi- or trim some of the vegetation, that can be provided to enhance that sightlines.
Yeah, so there's an existing like evergreen tree, I think it's probably when this was here for the office, it might have been a little bit smaller, but it's, uh, it's shown in the picture there, so, uh, our thought was either that should be trimmed or be removed. It's in the townships right of way, so, um, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily know that the township will have an issue with it if the applicant were amenable to removing it, especially if it improves sightlines and traffic safety. Is that something, John, that the applicant would be amenable to?
Yes.
So, and then I'll just ask Scott a couple questions. So you said you performed the gap study for the left turning movement, right? What was like in the worst-case scenario with the site traffic that's being generated? What was the maximum queue line that's, that would build up there?
We're looking at three to four and we can store approximately six vehicles between the two intersections.
Yeah, so that's the box that you're going to be striping from the box to the six vehicles, right?
Correct, it's consistent with the previous site plan approval.
So, and I, I think the important factor of it is the condition agreeing to nothing uh, past four P M, because once you start getting four, five, six P M, then you're on the peak of the county road and that may change, so.
Different.
Um, you know, if the board were to act favorably on the application, I would say if any, say they want to sell it to someone else that wants to operate a daycare, um, with different hours of operation beyond four P M, they'd have to come back to this board for relief of that condition, so I think that's, that's an important.
But also, Charlie, what about the morning?
Well, that's, that's another benefit, because typically, um, the traffic volumes start dissipating after eight-thirty to nine o'clock, and again, we're looking at a start time of eight forty-five. So again, we're on the, the, the lower end of traffic volume, so it's, it's a benefit that we're working within that window, in, in my opinion.
So, and then I, I want to clarify, because I think, um, when we updated our letter, we had calculated the parking requirement because there was those conflicting renderings. So I think with eight bedrooms, they're, they're compliant, eight, sorry, eight classrooms, they're compliant with the parking requirements and the ordinance and, um, you know, when towns don't have an ordinance requirement for daycares, a common reference is the I.T. parking manual, and we took a look at that to see if you went based off the number of students, the gross floor area and the employee count. For twenty-nine employees in the I.T. parking, the requirement for an average site would be thirty-six parking spaces. If it's based off of the gross floor area, it would be twenty-two parking spaces, and if it would be based off of the student count, the average rate would be forty-four. So I think they're providing fifty-two, even if we lose three spaces, they still have, you know, in excess of what the general, you know, recommendations are from the I.T. parking manager. So I don't have an issue with the loss of the three spaces. Um, I think, um, they've done more due diligence with the traffic and I think they provided enough information, and I think that's, the cutoff at four P M is an important measure because that, um, a, a normal daycare that might, like me, like operate till six, six-thirty, then that becomes more of a concern peaking with the county road at four P M. I think that alleviates a lot of that concern from a traffic perspective. That's all I have from Mr. Kennel.
Um, Scott, I'm looking at the, this parking lot is going to be reconfigured to accommodate, uh, this ti- daycare as opposed to the office building, right? So as far as the drop-offs and everything, do you think we're sufficient with the striping and everything for the children being dropped off?
Yes, I mean, a- again, typically people park in a parking spot and then bring a child into the building.
Okay, so they will be pulling in and then basically, it's not going to be like a drop-off at most schools where you're?
Typically, they're required to, the parents are required to walk their child into the building.
Okay, well, that's, that's a whole different, so that's, that's, actually, this is fine then.
And, and as was mentioned earlier, with the daycare center, we'll work with Charlie's office on whether it's adding a crosswalk or some sort of, uh, means connecting the playground to the building.
Yeah, because I think that, that is important. So anybody else from the board?
I just have a question. Did you say that on the, um, in the playground area where you're going to take away a couple parking spots, you're going to put metal rails or ballards?
That will be, you know, the engineer will work with Charlie's office on what's appropriate and then obviously we have to work with DCA because they have criteria as well, so combination.
Okay, because I think that's a good thing to protect the children, you know, while they're playing, that the cars can't get to them.
Agreed.
Okay, thanks.
So, so last two comments, um, you know, I think, um, as far as like twenty-nine employees, maybe it might be best if like certain spaces are designated just to employees, so that way it's not like a free fall throughout all the site and people coming to the site nowhere. So maybe like the, the northern bank of parking spaces and then the eastern bank of parking spaces, that, that might be best suited for like employee parking, so that way all your drop-offs are concentrated like closer to the site frontage and they're not having to do a three sixty around the site? Is that something? Okay, and then, um, you know, I'm not a big advocate for speed humps, but, you know, maybe that's something ma- in, in a couple spots here, just so that way people aren't blowing through, you know, the site.
I would say like around that curve by where you're, where the, the playground is, if you put like a, a speed hump there along with the fence that's required and maybe some protective measures that would prevent, I'm, I'm not advocating that people are going to blow through the site, but it would definitely slow someone down in the event that they were driving faster than they should.
Somewhere right after the entranceway too, that little entrance driveway, just so people entering and exiting.
If the board is amenable to that, I would just suggest that Mr. Civ work with Charlie's office on finding appropriate locations.
Yeah, I would say maybe do the rumble strips proposal, speed bumps, or some, something we can work with the board.
Yep.
Okay.
Say speed bumps. I'm sorry.
James, John? Uh, I, I'm just curious, is there, in, in this picture that you see above, um, is there any proposed striping in the roadway to separate the two lanes, uh, coming in and out?
Two lanes on the driveway?
Yeah, so.
I mean, we can add it.
There's access right here, right? So that people turning into the site aren't driving in the middle of the road, uh, possibly crashing into people coming out, because that, I mean, that roadway isn't extremely wide, so some kind of delineation to show the two different sides?
Yeah, so I think they were actually curving, curving and slightly widening the cartway coming into Old Oakland Road, and they were with the prior approval, they were, in addition to striping the box, they were doing a stop bar and a double yellow, I think.
Correct.
Past the site driveway. So that probably hasn't been effectuated yet because they haven't gotten the C O on the existing structure.
But those same striping recommendations will be put in place with this, correct?
Gotcha. And regardless that the board approved it, the original approval is still in place and they'd have to do that regardless.
Okay.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Kettle, I'm just looking at your, what is this, your report, your figure, figure two from your report.
Okay, was that from the October 2024, or is that?
It says April 2025.
Okay, that's one of the supplements we submitted. Okay.
Looks like you have 75 cars, because it's, well, I did on the AM. So your AM peak hours on your report is 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock, right, on your AM?
Well, that's that's what the peak traffic volumes are. But as you heard testimony, it's going to be probably more 8:30 to 9:30.
Okay, but as far as this, it's from eight, your your report is from 8:00 to 9:00.
Correct.
And you have 75 cars going in during that AM. But there's been testimony that you have 77 families and 30 staff members, so that's 107 cars. And I know the time is a little different because they're they're working on like 8:45 to 9:45. And you're working from 8:00 to 9:00, but we're still talking way over your number.
Well, we're looking at basically a 90, a 90-minute window. But I mean, basically, we're showing here 75 inbound trips.
So it's higher than that, right?
Excuse me?
It's higher than that.
No.
The testimony from Mrs. Mrs. Volunov was that there's multiple kids per family.
77.
Right, but if I could just, John, I could probably clear this up. Because you're double counting, as the testimony said, a lot of the staff are also families that are bringing their children to the center. So you're counting all the families plus the staff, and there's an overlap there. So you're double counting that.
All right, okay, I didn't hear that part.
And there's there's typically some carpooling too, where multiple, some families will have multiple children. So it's it's where some cars will have two families of kids coming in. So it's it's a carpooling, it's the staff. And again, this is consistent with the Institute of Transportation Engineers' traffic projections. That's what was utilized here, which is generally consistent with the testimony earlier by the by the expert.
And how much of an overlap is there? Is it like five, like 10?
I mean, I think the testimony was a good portion of the 29 staff members will be individuals that have children as part of the center. I don't think it was a, there was a definitive number, but a a significant portion of those 29 are also parents that would bring there. That's what she said.
And and you got it, my, the analysis here is based on 60 minutes. We're basically looking at a 90-minute window on the inside. So you're not, we're, you're not going to capture everybody in that 60-minute period. You know, traffic studies are done for the peak, peak hour, 60-minute period. So the traffic projections I'm showing here are based on a 60-minute period, where we basically have a 90-minute window on the front end as well as the dismissal. So that's why you're not going to, our volumes are not going to show all the traffic captured or generated by this site.
And do you mind, because I've never even seen, I've never seen this chart before. Can you explain the gap analysis chart that you have here, like what what these numbers, if you just want to pick a few of those numbers and just explain what exactly we're talking about here?
Okay, and just if I, we're referring to the?
Page, on page two of your.
April 2nd or May 6th, just so.
May 6th, you revised.
Okay.
I guess table one.
Table one, yes. So basically, the industry standard, and this is as it refers to the the left turns, and we're trying to create gaps for people to enter Route 5, 547 South. And the minimum gap acceptance in the industry is seven seconds.
So this is coming off Oakland, turning left onto.
Turning left. So you need a gap in both directions of a minimum of seven seconds. We used eight, eight seconds and above. But basically, we have staff that's out there recording the amount of gaps for the time period they're out there. And what this chart has stated is that on March 11th, and we'll look at table one, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., there were five gaps from, that are eight to nine seconds long. From, and then there are four gaps, if you move to the to the right, that are 10 to 11 seconds long. And as you see, then we increase, and you have, you have, there are 56 gaps in excess of 20 seconds. And basically, gaps of nine seconds or less can accommodate one vehicle. But if you have a 10-second gap, and it's all based on industry standards, it can accommodate two vehicles, and and so on. So a 15-second gap would accommodate three vehicles. And from that, we determined that there, from the 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., there were 200, we could accommodate 252 left turns for that one hour period, based on the gaps that were recorded. And again, that's attributed to the traffic flow up and down 5, 547 to the north. The traffic signal creates gaps. And then just based, and then to the south, it's really associated with traffic that's entering and exiting 547. And then we even followed up and did additional gaps in May of this year, which are generally consistent with what were recorded back in March. So this is, again, a means to determine what the capacity is for that left turn movement for that time period identified.
Okay, because when I look at that intersection, I'm I'm thinking of that, I don't know, can we bring bring up the map again? Or the, I don't know if that was a Google, Google map of that intersection? Is that, is that space between the entranceway? Yeah, so coming off 547, making the right turn onto Oak Glen. How many, how many cars are going to be getting queued up as cars are waiting to turn in? You know, that that's, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty short distance right there. That's like, what is that, 30 yards, maybe?
We have 150, about 150 feet between the intersections.
30 yards.
There's no turning right on 547 coming north.
No, I mean, we we conducted that analysis for the left turn into Old Oak Glen Road, and they terminated operate Level Service A. And the 95th percentile queue, as I recall, let me get there, was one vehicle. So what that means is that that left turn movement into Old Oak Glen Road operates very efficiently. And yes, the 95th percentile queue, the 95th.
Oak Glen Road?
From Oak Glen Road onto Old Oak Glen Road.
Oh, that little road?
Yes, that's that's Old Oak Glen Road.
That used to go through all the way. It's a 547, and then the county reconfigured it. But there's, that little stub is still Old Oak Glen Road. It's still.
That's where they turn in to go into the.
Into daycare center, correct.
And there is another property be behind that too, beyond it.
So what the analysis indicates is that the 95th percentile queue is less than one vehicle. So that means that there's very little delay for someone turning in onto Old Oak Glen Road.
From.
He says it's 50 yards.
547 northbound. From the 547 northbound left onto Oak Glen?
Well, right now is, basically, we have, you'd have to turn that to really be northbound. But if you're heading northbound on 547, you're going to, okay, there you go. So now that's more northerly. So now we're going to, northbound, 547, make a right turn, and then a left turn into Old, Old, Old Oak Glen Road.
But in theory, that should be striped, like don't block the box, right? So regardless, when you make the turn onto Oak Glen, you should be able to make the left.
On him.
Old Oak Glen with no problem because you're not supposed to be blocking the box.
Correct. So that just enforces, but also then that means, based the analysis, it's going to replicate the analysis that shows a good level of service, very low delay.
Charlie, you in agreement? You know what I'm saying with this queuing up with the, making that right turn onto Oak Glen with that short span before you make that left into the?
Yeah, so so I think this was a concern that came up when this was an office use, and they agreed to like striping, so if you're heading west on Oakland Road to the intersection, there's going to be like the, don't block the box, white pavement striping with Xs and signage.
Right in here.
Right in there to prevent people from, if the queue were to build up, which their analysis shows it doesn't, but if it were to, like, you shouldn't have vehicles in that westbound travel lane, in that blocked area. And if they were, then it would be something that P.D. can enforce and.
So traffic would have to stop before.
Yes.
Correct.
The driveway in.
Yep.
Look at page three of the PowerPoint. You can see the striping.
Maybe other PowerPoint open?
What page?
Page three. If it's already top left, it's it's a little hard to see there.
Not there. Top page three.
Yeah, page. Yeah.
It picks late a little bit, but.
I see it. Well, if that is helpful.
On your handouts, you can see it a little better. The top image on page three.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Kettle?
Yes.
How many total vehicles can fit inside the property where the daycare is being proposed? Not counting parking spaces, because that's fluctuated between 49, and we take away some. So we're at 45, say. How many other vehicles can fit in there?
Well, again, we have 46 striped parking spaces. Can there be other vehicles in the aisle? I haven't done that calculation, but again, we're looking at number of striped spaces, parents that are dropping off or picking up, parking a space, and then go into the building. And again, we indicated that there may, there's going to be 29 staff, but not all staff drive, some get dropped off, and some of the staff also have children within the program as well.
But that's a fluctuating assumption, correct?
As far as the number of staff that are have children in the program, yes.
So in a maximum case scenario?
Roots, that's 50%.
She said 2.5, I think, was the average, right?
That's children. That's children.
That's that's children per.
Per family. That's children per family. That was her assumption. But I think the testimony was that, like, half the staff.
70-something, I think, is what we.
72 families.
Correct.
Which is the total number of children divided by 2.5.
Right.
But that's separate statistic from the percentage of staff that have children in the program.
And we know, and we know that how?
She testified to it.
But I've I've also done research in Lakewood, a number of the daycare centers. So the number of children per vehicle is consistent with what was testified earlier. And they, I've I've worked on at least 20 daycare centers in Lakewood. And it is commonplace where a a large percentage of the staff have children in the program as well. So this is consistent.
Observant religious Jewish community.
Correct.
When my kids were younger, I had two kids in daycare at the same time, so I know how that works.
Well, as far as staff.
But after I pulled my kids out, two other people could have come in with separates. So it fluctuates. That's all I'm saying. So what we talk about is the the start point doesn't remain that way inconsistency.
Traffic is the law of averages.
True.
And it's, and I'm sure it's the same thing with staffing too, is if a staff member doesn't have any children in the, in the school, they may move on to do another job, and then you have other younger children coming in, which may bring in a new staff member. It's a fluctuating activity.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And this witness is Christine Capone, and she's the the last witness we have.
So, and Mr. Ryan, just to add clarity too, so the the on-site parking area, they're required to strip everything internal, all the drive aisles is fire lane. So if there were more vehicles and they were parking in the drive aisle and things like that, there would be recourse for P.D. to come in and ticket because it's a fire lane, and it would be violating that. So if there were more more cars on site than what could actually park, and it was a safety issue, then then P.D. could come on and and issue tickets.
Don't we have to approve a certain?
Yeah, so I think that's part of the prior approval that might have been a requirement. I I've, I think, talked with the engineering department. It's my understanding that a fire lane on a private site, that P.D. can go and enforce a traffic like violation for parking in a fire lane. They don't necessarily need Title 39 for that. That's my understanding from engineering.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Christine Nazarova phone, licensed professional planner. I've testified here in Howell on many occasions, as well as hundreds of other planning and zoning boards, and my licenses are current and valid.
What's your name again?
Getting a rent bill from here. The reason we're here before the board this evening is because the subject property, which has been described by prior witnesses and is already developed, is in the ARE-6 zone. While the ARE zone, ARE-6 zone conditionally allows schools, it does not allow daycares. So therefore, we need to seek a use variance for that. So as a inherently beneficial use, but there is case law that demonstrates that daycares are, you will not hear the traditional testimony that references particular suitability and the positive and negative criteria because as an inherently beneficial use, we presumptively satisfy the particular suitability and positive criteria. Rather, you will hear the four-pronged SEEK of Balancing Test, which the first part of that test is to identify the public interest at stake, which is here is the provision of childcare. So the second prong in that test is to identify any detrimental impacts and then add some conditions of approval that could be introduced to balance them. I was just taking notes as we went through the case tonight, and I identified a number of conditions that I think the board could impose on this application. Most notably, the hours of operation. I think that that's really key to marrying this use with the traffic testimony that was offered by Mr. Kettle. I concur with the testimony, and I have done many daycare applications. And I would say the hours of 8:45 to approximately 4:00 o'clock are rather inconsistent with a tutor time or other other God of School daycare. So I think that this is a a condition that would allow the application to certainly not have any substantial detriment on the zone plan or the public good. Some other conditions that I heard was to increase the play area, to expand both the size and shape of it to make it more functional, as well as to add some rumble strips to ensure that the traffic will flow safely, slowly, and efficiently through the site. So to me, that really is is excellent for the board to do what you need to do in the SEEK of Balancing Test, which is balance. You, you, again, like any application, you will have to balance and weigh the benefits and the positives. And I think that here, with the imposition of those reasonable conditions, the board can certainly conclude that the grant of the variance relief will have no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. As you know, this is an existing developed property. It was previously approved with the minimum front yard setback, as well as the proposed lot coverage. I would submit to you as a D. variance, I believe, whether it's inherently beneficial or not, those bulk variances are subsumed into the D. variance that is being requested in conjunction with this application. The last thing I would like to add to my testimony is that one of the goals in the master plan here in Howell is to encourage the redevelopment of, and revitalization of vacant or underutilized properties. And I think that this certainly is an existing property, right? It's the reuse of an existing, developed property. So I see no reason why the board would not approve this application. I think we we satisfy the SEEK of Balancing Test for this inherently beneficial use, and that there would be no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good if, in fact, this application were moved. And again, I do think it's noteworthy that in the ARE-6, schools are actually allowable, public schools, which I believe would have much more of an intense impact on the zone than the proposed daycare facility. Oh, I should testify through the sign, right? I believe Mr. Seb did defer that to me. We are proposing a sign that is located in the with the island. The sign was sort of mimics the, it's on, you have your detail sheet. There is a detail of it on your detail sheet, and it has, it sympathetic to the architecture of the building, and it reads Oak Glen Daycare. It's got two bricked piers on it. Those brick piers stand about eight feet tall. So to the extent the use is not permissible in the zone, we would need to seek the variance relief for that sign. But I would say it would be reasonable and customary to have a sign associated with this use. And I think the board can grant it under the C.2 criteria and that there's no substantial detriment or better zoning alternative to have a a sign that allows for the identification of the, the modest sign that allows for the identification of the building. So with that being said, I think that the application meets all of the relief required for the grants of the variances associated with this proposed daycare facility.
No further questions.
Okay, Jennifer.
I don't, I don't have to take exception to any of the testimony provided. I mean, if you think about the transition of this property, I think we first approved it as a, like a tow yard originally.
Then an office building.
Then it came back, and it would transition to an office building, and now they're looking for a daycare. So I don't, I agree it's inherently beneficial. I take no exception to the proofs that were put on the record.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chairman?
What?
I just had a, out of curiosity, question from the applicant. If he would be able to answer as to, you know, the board approved an office space, and we didn't even get a C.O. for that office space. What led to the decision to change before even completing the the original plural, the construction of the original?
The building's up, it's built, and, you know, it's not occupied. And my clients just thought that this was a better use for that building and the location, considering the needs of the community. They thought that this was a better alternative than to have an office there. That's why they're seeking this approval.
And that much change in such a short amount of time?
I'm sorry?
That much change in such a short amount of time?
They view this as a better alternative based upon, you know, the market and what they can do with the building.
Okay.
Unless there is anything else, I guess we will entertain a motion to go to public.
Motion to go to public.
Second by Jose. All in favor?
Aye.
The board will now be open to the public for questions or comments. You could come up, state your name and your address. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is William Jensen. I live on 773 Oakland Road in Howell.
Mr. Jensen, do you affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I sure do. I don't know where these traffic statistics are coming from because I live on that road. And that intersection is starting to be a disaster. And the one down on Randolph is a real disaster. So I don't know, they seem to know their customers. So I don't know. They seem to know their customer base. Are they gonna be coming up Oakland from the south? Or turning in from the south outside of four-fifty-seven? It's gonna be a big problem. There's a lot of traffic there, especially between four and six on Randolph. It's, you can't even get, it's backed up by ten, fifteen cars. And where, where they're coming out with this, this school is, when you're gonna make a right and head north, if there's a car that's gonna go south, you can't even see to be able to pull out. Sometimes it takes you a minute, a minute and a half to get out of there. And, you know, I don't know if that means anything to anybody, but it's gonna be a problem when people come from the south making a left, a right-hand turn, and then a left into that place. You only got space for about three cars there. When they fly around that corner, they're not gonna stop. And that's my biggest concern. And the other, other concern, which isn't me, because I don't have small kids anymore, but that's right next to a power line, and there's a big cell tower right there, too. It's right, right next to that property. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Um, as you know, that this was approved for a office.
Yeah.
So, right now, you're gauging it, because there's no, nobody. But if that office was in operation now, we might be dealing with, with traffic there as well. Just so you.
You'd have, if you got a hundred and seventy-five kids.
Yeah, but they're not all driving.
No, they're not. But, but they're gonna be coming at a closer time, I would think, than the others.
Yeah, I, I, that part I, I do concur with you a little bit. Because it is gonna be more restricted time. Office is gonna be more flexible, so.
That's, you know.
But I, I, I use that intersection a lot, so I'm not debating.
You know what I'm talking about. And the one, and the one down the street's worse.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I just didn't know if you guys were aware of that.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Joseph Bronner at twenty-nine eighteen Lakewood Allenwood Road. Mr. Bronner, do you affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what, what the previous gentleman said. I, I'm on that intersection every day, either in a car or on my bicycle. And, you know, over the last year, between the hours of two and four, there's a lot more traffic queuing up to make either a right or a left onto five forty-seven. You know, that Oakland Road from Vienna to the intersection, there's, there's not even a shoulder there. So where are these cars gonna be queuing up? Because it's gonna be a lot of cars concentrated in, in a two-hour period, let's say. And there's no shoulder, so they're gonna be blocking. They're gonna be lined up, possibly all the way down to Vienna, blocking Vienna. And also coming in from five forty-seven, making either a right or a left, it's a tiny little area. Then you have to wait to make a left into the driveway. So if you have a, a box there or not, there's still cars gonna have to slow down and make a slow turn in. So you're gonna have a lot of traffic on either side. So that is my concern. I don't really think it's been addressed as far as, you know, you mentioned there's gonna, an office there, but it's a lot of parents coming to pick up their kids in a very concentrated amount of time, so you're gonna have a lot of backup of cars there. And I also was wondering about the power lines. Is there no concern about the high-voltage lines? I mean, I know there's been studies done about, you know, health effects on children, and they go pretty much right overhead. So those are some things I think are, are important considerations, especially with the, the traffic. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Nobody else?
I'll make a motion to close, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
The board will now be closed to the public.
Okay. Professionals, anything to add after the public's comments?
I would just say Vienna Road is approximately like seven-hundred-and-fifty feet to the east of Old Oakland Road. So, you know, I think if you, if each car took up twenty-five feet, you'd have the ability to have thirty cars queuing up to Vienna Road. So there is some separation. And I think, obviously, you've heard the testimony about the, don't block the intersection pavement and signage and everything that's going localized to Old Oakland and Oakland Road there. So, um, and even if this were an office use, you still also do have, like, a general concentration of trips coming in and out, like, when people are leaving work after, you know, from five to six PM. So there, there is, you know, not the same use, but there is a tra, a significant traffic generator that has been considered and approved by the board for this site. So, um, it's not like there's, it's not like this is a property or use from scratch, a vacant piece of property. There is already been approval for a commercial use with a, a traffic generation component to it, so.
Charlie, if I can ask, what was the impact, what was the traffic impact? And I wasn't here when that was approved. But what was the traffic impact for the office versus what we're listening to now?
So I, I think the biggest piece of the puzzle with the use that's being proposed is the difference in the peak hours. So office use is gonna peak with, uh, five, is it five forty-seven there?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, the concern with queuing during the peak hour and the available gap might be less, because you're gonna have more traffic volume going down five forty-seven. I think the condition that this is gonna be done at four PM, well, you might have more peak hour trips for a daycare use. It's not gonna be occurring during the peak hour of five forty-seven. And if this property were to be sold to some different user who wants to operate a daycare beyond four PM, they would have to come back before the board and ask for relief of that condition, which, um, you know, in my opinion, I, I would be more concerned if this was operating during the traditional peak hour of five forty-seven. So.
Anybody else before we have closing statement from?
And what were the hours of operation, again?
Eight forty-five to four.
And that'll be?
Monday through Friday, eight forty-five to four.
But, I mean, that'll be in the resolution?
And they've agreed to a condition, four PM is the, is the shut-off.
Okay.
I don't know if anything would help. We have two residents saying it one way and the traffic report another. But if they staggered the hours of coming and leaving, would it help?
We can't do that.
But we can't do that.
I mean, because people have different jobs and obligations, so you can't dictate to someone, you have to arrive. You could say you have to be here no later than four. And I can guarantee you, like, when Charlie goes to pick her up and she's, and he's late, he's, like, peeling in there on two wheels, because every minute you're late, they charge you money. So.
Okay, it was just a thought.
Yeah. I mean, I, I agree with Charlie. Eight forty-five to four is gonna be off-peak for the road, for five forty-seven. You know, I mean, I'm not saying there's not traffic. There's traffic every minute of every day on every road in the town. But when you're talking about the peak hours, they're arriving, they're occurring earlier, and they're, they're later in the day.
I guess my only, my only thing, though, is you still have elementary school buses going at that point.
But that's gonna be the case if you have, if you have, you know, an office, you're still gonna have traffic in and out. And let's not take it away from the fact that if you have an office, depending on what type of office, now you're inviting additional public, not just employees and whatever, to interact with those on the roads as well. I, I mean, it's totally up to you. I'm not gonna say that there's not gonna be traffic. There is. But I do think that the concessions that the applicant made on the hours of operation kind of mitigate some of the impact. I'm not saying all the impact, but I'm saying some of the impact.
I do have another question. The, um, the markings for the, um, the striping, the don't block the box, like, who's, who gives that permission? Is that the township? Is that a county road?
We did it right. Part of the last application.
Yeah, so whether or not you approve this tonight, right, that was a condition of the prior approval for the office. So that approval still stands and that requirement. If they wanna, you know, say they abandoned the daycare and they wanted to go back to the office, they'd still have to put in that don't block the box and all the signage for the prior approval. They're just carrying through those seem improvements with this application if the board were to act favorably on it.
Okay. And getting back to that, what's that, thirty-nine? What was that? Does that play into this application?
You can certainly request it. I think, um, there's been some, from like the engineering department of, it's just a lot of extra steps for the council to adopt the resolution and everything like that. It's certainly within your purview to ask for them to do it. My understanding, in speaking with the township engineering department and PD, is if the aisles are striped as a fire lane, the PD has the ability to come on the site and ticket someone for parking in a fire lane, because it's a safety issue. Title thirty-nine gives, like, blanket for all. Any kind of traffic violation that you could impose on a public right-of-way, Title thirty-nine gives you the ability to also impose those restrictions on a private site. But as far as a fire lane, that is like a safety issue and, and code enforcement or PD could come in, cite a violation, or issue a ticket for that.
Or FD.
Fire Department.
Now, board members, do you think it should be part of it?
Always done it.
We've always done it, right?
Yeah, you can require it.
I mean, that was definitely a Paul Seis special.
Yes.
We should agree to Title thirty-nine.
To, to the chagrin of some, of some of the management in Howell Township, but yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Jackson, I guess we, it was put on testimony. There's not gonna be any small school buses coming in.
Correct.
Okay. And the second thing is, one thing Charlie had mentioned, and I saw, too, the pine tree will be, I think, should come out. And then it can be replaced with low-growing shrubbery or something suitable to the satisfaction.
I think that's in the public right-of-way, Mr. Kuntlove said. We would, will request that the township allows us to do that.
Yeah, I think, okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, we have an ordinance for site triangles that requires nothing grow higher than thirty inches, I believe. So I would probably recommend not putting anything, because it's just gonna be a maintenance issue at this point, and we really want.
Oh, okay. If that's in the right-of-way, then, no, then I take that back. And I would, I think that the tree should come out.
We'll agree to make that request to the township.
Okay. You may proceed with your closing.
Thank you. Um, you know, the, could we go to slide three on the PowerPoint? So what we have is an existing building, and we are in the ARE six zone, which does allow schools. So I would respectfully submit that a school and a nursery school, really, really the same thing on a lot of levels. And in, on a lot of levels, this is a lower impact. And as if that is not enough, we have, a nursery school is an inherently beneficial use. That's a special status and recognition in the law and in the law of zoning. You know, or the New Jersey Supreme Court has said, an inherently beneficial use. So what, what you look to under the SEEK-a-test, as Ms. Capone has indicated, is say, well, what, what can we do for the fact that it's not in the zone? Well, you've heard qualified traffic testimony about the gap analysis. This does work. We have sufficient queuing. We've put into place certain measures that will make this work. We have the do-not-box, not-block-the-box striping. We've agreed to, you know, limit the landscaping. So as far as traffic, this is an appropriate place. The most important thing is that we've agreed to hours of operation that go from eight forty-five to four PM. And that is off-peak, so it works. It works. Now, this is going to be an amenity that will serve the community. I, I suppose if, if this isn't the daycare, people have to bring their kids to daycare. Maybe they'll just be traveling further. This is for people in this neighborhood. So we think that we've put on a good case. You know, we, we have fire suppression dealt with. We've made agreements to have the generators. We've made the playground better. And this is also a type of use that is highly regulated by the state of New Jersey. We must submit all our plans to the state, and they monitor and manage it. So we hope that the board will see that the measures that we put in place make it easy for this board to approve an inherently beneficial use. Thank you.
Okay. There's nothing further from our professionals. I guess we will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. I'm a little reluctant on it because of the traffic, but it is inherently beneficial. It has been planned, and it is well-presented. But my motion is to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add on to Mr. O'Donnell. I do wanna say we appreciate, you know, the, the, doing the generator. I think that's gonna be a great thing. I do agree the, the hours are ideal. And I also just wanna keep pointing out that, right now, they could open it as an office, and I think traffic-wise, we're not gonna be talking about a huge, a huge difference in what we're looking at here. So saying all that, I'll second Mr. O'Donnell's motion.
Okay. Second by Mr. Hughes. Roll call.
Mr. Barrow.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I, too, have a problem with the traffic. I have a problem with some of the assumptions that are made on the number of students and all. So I'm gonna vote no.
And Chairman Martin's?
I, too, have questions on the traffic, because there is a different timeframe when you're looking. If it was after four o'clock, I would definitely be saying no to this. But because we are restricting this to four o'clock, and because we have, the applicant has made some concessions to this board, I feel our planners have thought this out very carefully, so I will vote yes on this as well.
Application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any further business, Eileen, before we?
Just a reminder that the June twenty-third meeting is canceled, so our next meeting is July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'm not complaining. Yeah. Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close.
Make a motion to close.
All in favor?
Yes.